Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June 27th workshop. First up on the workshop agenda is Eric Cousins from Planning and Permitting to give us an update on zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The Planning Board held a special meeting last Tuesday.
Oh, why not? We're taking a jet.
Planning Board held a special meeting last Tuesday to take up a number of zoning changes and the reason they had a special meeting is just because with the number of project proposals combined with the zoning changes, we've had some late meetings and just trying to split those up over multiple nights rather than all in one night. Last week, the Board held a special public hearing and considered the update of the T-42B zoning district, which was a modification of the T-42 zoning district that the Council had asked for the Board to consider specifically for application to areas like the Court Street area as well as some other areas that have been recommended and considered for T-42 zoning. The Planning Board and the Council had indicated that they would like to modify that because there are some differences between the neighborhoods that T-42 has existed in and the areas where the T-42B would now be considered. The first step in that was to establish a set of standards that would make up the text of the T-42B zoning district and we had some really specific guidance from the Council on what uses would not necessarily be appropriate in the areas where we're looking to apply the form-based code district but not the full permissions of the T-42 zoning district as they exist today. The Board made a positive recommendation with some recommended changes to what the Council had asked for. The Board agreed that bed and breakfast establishments could be allowed with special exception approval, lodging allowed with special exception approval, personal services allowed with special exception approval, age-restricted retail should not be allowed, the Board agreed with that, not allowing restaurants over 30 seats whereas the T-42 zone does allow that with special exception. Government offices would be allowed based on the recommendation with a special exception approval from the Planning Board. Parking requirements, currently, most of the zones that have this allowance, you can provide for parking off-site within 1,000 feet. Reducing that to 500 feet really starts to, helps to limit density in the area that you could use to access parking around a particular development if the development doesn't have room on-site for the parking. Office service and retail uses, the Board agreed and recommended that those be allowed within the district but where the Board's recommendation differed from the Council was that the Council had suggested that the Board consider allowing those uses only when there's a residential unit on a second story of the building. The Board talked through that and they agreed that having the residential component where somebody could live and work on the same property made sense to require that residential component but they didn't recommend that we restrict it to only being on a second story. So what that would mean in the text is that potentially you could have a business less than 1,500 square feet in the T-42B zoning district if the Council adopts it the way that it was recommended. But you could have the residential unit either in the same building, on the same level, it could be below the business, it could be above the business, or it could be a separate building on the same lot. The multifamily uses allowed with special exception, I think that's sort of at the core of the comprehensive plan recommendations and making housing more accessible and allowing for varied housing types throughout the residential areas where we have city services. The Board did recommend that that be allowed with special exception and we did have a few questions come up about with LD 2003, why would it be required to go through a special exception review? Currently, state subdivision law requires a site plan subdivision review for any time that a property owner creates three or more units in a five-year period. So even if the city didn't specifically say that it required special exception approval, the subdivision law would trigger that if there were three or more units. And we do have the flexibility and I think it makes a lot of sense because we have a robust site plan review, special exception ordinance, if there are multiple units in a building, then we do have the ability to apply our special exception standards in lieu of state subdivision law because our ordinance meets the requirements to do that. And it makes a lot of sense, I think, to use those standards for multifamily developments instead of subdivision where we don't have individual wells and soil tests for septic because we're on public utilities. The setbacks of the T-42B, as the Planning Board recommended, are the Board, the T-42 zone and the Council had suggested a minimum of five feet to a maximum of 15 feet for front setbacks. The Board is suggesting that we use a minimum of five feet as exists in the T-42 zone but to be a little more flexible on the maximum setback in these areas because we have a lot of houses that are already set back further from the road especially as you get to rural areas. The Board's suggestion is a maximum setback, a minimum of five, maximum of 25 feet or 25% of the average lot depth. So if you have a lot over 100 feet in depth, then the 25% of the average lot depth would dictate the maximum setback.
Do you have control of that?
Yes.
Will you roll it so the people can see it? Because you have all that on here too as well.
Yeah, sorry about that. So on the setbacks, so if you have a lot, the way the Board's recommended, over 100 feet in depth and that would yield a maximum setback of larger, offer more flexibility for moving your house back further from the road especially in rural areas whether that's a house or multifamily or a small business less than 1,500 square feet. We didn't have a lot of chance to talk about that. I think one thing to think about on that 25% is if you did have a really large lot, then it could, it won't form the street line or the buildings up near the street that the form-based code envisions. But they're also the anomaly or the more rural areas where you have lots that are, you know, generally more than 100 feet deep or more commonly more than 100 feet deep. In the in-town built-up area, that 25-foot setback would usually hold as a maximum.
Any questions on that part of it before we move on to the second item that they made a recommendation?
Just hand it over to Counselor Staples and Counselor Hawes. You all made this recommendation, so at your plants, what are your feelings?
Yeah, I think that the Planning Board made some good recommendations. I think our initial, probably the biggest one that they changed was the second-floor residential on a business and I think that this recommendation makes perfect sense to have residents in the same lot as the business. You know, I think that's good stuff.
Yeah, same. I agree with Counselor Staples, having the multi, or having the residential unit within the same vicinity is perfectly fine. I do share the same concerns about the setbacks especially for the larger parcels, so something that needs to be taken into consideration but overall, it fits what we were looking for.
Counselor Walker.
My only concern is the restaurant, the 30 seats. I don't think there's anybody that could open a restaurant and sustain it with 30 seats. I think it's too small. If you take any one-level apartment house over there, if they wanted to put in a restaurant, it would be big enough to put more than 30 seats in it, I'm sure. I think that's a little, if you were looking to make a living doing this, you need more 30 seats. Look how small Rowley's is, for instance, and there's over 60 seats there.
Yeah, I don't disagree. A lot of restaurant tours, my family's been in a lot of them. I think this is mostly geared towards a pizza market, style restaurants. I think restaurants is a pretty loose definition of facility versus a Rowley's, you've got Pizza Mark, you've got Heathco's, it's more of a to-go or carry-out. Small cafes, forage market, for example, those all have under 30 seats, specialty businesses. But again, I think, I mean, I don't disagree with you, I'm just trying to clarify the definition of restaurant. It's pretty broad. Any other questions? I have a question on age-restricted. Just for, when it's talking about age-restricted, retail not allowed, are we talking about any project that is obviously age-restricted to purchase, cigarettes, wine, marijuana? Does it still have to be 50% or more of their business or is it just you can't sell that in the area?
So, and we may want to get more specific in this for this particular zoning district but it's more than 50% of the floor area is dedicated to the sale of age-restricted goods. In the discussion at Planning Board, I was thinking it was more than 50% of the sales. Our definition is 50% of the floor area dedicated to age-restricted. So it's conceivable, and the Planning Board talked through this, that, I don't want to pick on Heathco's, but it's the first one that comes to mind, a convenience store, takeout, kind of a corner store, could, under that, also become a marijuana store and a small footprint under the definition that we have, so we may want to clarify that in the final adoption.
Thoughts from the City Council on that?
I don't know that the state licensing would allow that to occur in the same space but we can find that out.
Well, I mean, we also have to think about the multiple-layer approach we've taken as a city. We now have a 2,000-foot buffer between stores plus schools, so we have schools peppering these areas and that's a pretty, once you start making the concurrent circles, eliminates these neighborhoods for marijuana, which I believe is, in my opinion, from what I've talked to constituencies and what I've heard, that is really what we're talking about. A wine martini bar, small, you know, and cheese, like an old, oh, come on.
Austin's.
Thank you. Like Austin's, I don't think that is what people are upset about. They probably like that. It's the downtown marijuana.
And a general retail use is still a special exception, so I think all of those things could be clarified through a Planning Board review to make sure that an approval is specific to the type of goods.
Eric, could, but using your example, could an existing store add age-restricted retail after opening through a regular process without a special exception?
I think that somebody could argue that they could. I think the special exception review could stop that, that we could be specific about the types of goods but it also, it may not hurt to be very specific that there is absolutely no marijuana sales allowed.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see if staff had recommendations on what language we could add to this that would tighten that up a little bit.
I agree.
Yeah. And let's see, first of all, if it's an actual thing that needs to be addressed. In other words, I mean, with those 2,000-square-foot set-asides, do we actually have to add marijuana, specific language around marijuana?
Can we see a map that has the concentric circles?
Probably a good time to review that as well, after that change and see if it's happened after we made that change, which is four months ago.
To me, if there's any doubt, I'd rather put it in there than it's excluded.
Yeah, agreed. And I do like the special exception. When we have a special exception, anytime someone might propose any type of multifamily over three units or retail, Austin's, it has to go in front of Planning Board review. Can we get feedback on that? Nothing that can be used, just not necessarily. So I think that'd probably be, you know, looking at this and getting some feedback pre-July 18th or during July 18th, some clarification, I think, might be good on that one point. That's the only point that we're really, that we're looking at, correct? Anything else? Any other questions or clarification? No?
I guess in regards to the setback, I'd be interested in how many lots exceed that 100-foot depth and if there are, where they're located, because obviously, that would be an issue downtown or in the more tightly-knit neighborhood. But as you get further out of town, you know, the form base, it kind of does fit the form of those size lots in that type of environment. So I'd just be curious if there's any lots that do exceed 100 feet by any magnitude that are within those more tightly-knit neighborhoods.
Basically, any lot in excess of 20,000 square feet. Because after 100 feet back, 100 feet of road frontage, plus your house, plus your rear setbacks, you're looking at around, it's a 20,000-square-foot lot at a minimum in order to even possibly achieve more than a 25-foot setback.
The likelihood of that is, like, there could, there will be some, but they'll not be in town.
But it's good to see a map of it.
But it's, they've been looking at just doing a query of 20,000-square-foot lots or above. That way you can then map that out. That should be an easier way to collect that data.
I think we could look at where that's the general character and maybe point out some examples. We don't have a data point, we have the maps that have dimensions on them but we don't have a data point where we could automatically select lots deeper than that, but we could find some examples in town. And I think, as you pointed out, the general lot characteristics in town, those are really an anomaly in town in the denser built-up area and then they become more common as you move to the perimeter more rurally.
Okay. I think, thank you very much. We're good.
Just a quick question for Eric. Could, on the 25-foot setback, could you look at something like a 25-foot setback or an exception for a lot with topography or other conditions that would require more depth? That way you'd restrict it.
To the average of the...
It's sort of a compromise.
To the average setback of the existing abutters?
Yeah, something, just...
We do have some zones that recognize the abutting lots and allow that average, so that could be a way to achieve that in character with the surrounding home.
Okay. Thank you very much. And first reading on this is July 18th?
Yes.
Followed by a second reading, August 1st.
And the second part of this was the applying this to the Court Street area and we included a draft recommendation from the Planning Board. That draft will go back to the Planning Board tomorrow night. They'll finalize any clarifications and we'll forward that to you as an official communication on the 18th. But in summary, the Board was uncomfortable with applying a zone that they don't know exactly what the text will be to the Court Street area, so they've recommended that you not approve that until there's an opportunity to know what the text is and then consider applying to other areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, turn it over to the City Manager, Phil, for our discussion on ARPA, American Recovery Protection Act money.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So just a quick update, then a couple projects to bring your attention to as they come to us for consideration. I believe the last, second half of the portion of the ARPA funds, if it hasn't been deposited yet, it will be probably this week. Most other municipalities are receiving their second half, so that will complete U.S. Treasury's distribution of those funds, that would be the $13.5 million. You did allocate $50,000 for a nonprofit grant regarding recreation. That was in your packet. Just as an update on that, we have received three and I believe one is pending of $10,000 awards. One was to the YMCA for scholarships for their summer camp program. One was to the Auburn Ski Association. They were unable to hold their annual ski swaps for the last two years, so 10,000 was allocated to them. The Blaze Hoops Academy, which is the main basketball club, they'll provide 20 Auburn participant scholarships to attend their summer hoop camp. That's about $500 each for training practices, games, and uniforms. And then what's pending currently is $10,000 for the Auburn Suburban Little League. So that's the current update on those recreational programs that you had allocated funds for. Sustainable Energy, this is the matching rebate awards. We'll continue to give you updates on this as we, periodically as we get more information. But as of June 23rd, 144 rebates were issued. The state rebate program issued a total of $120,518 in rebates and so Auburn's rebate program issued a total of $105,000 in rebates. So those are well over $225,000 that has gone back to taxpayers. The next one is a couple, couple projects I want to just bring your attention to. One is the Auburn Sewer Storage Tank. I had a meeting with a couple councilors regarding the initiative that's underway of the storage tank with LAPKA. LAPKA had come in giving you an update on that a couple months ago, talked about the need for that storage tank. This is regarding our stormwater separation. I believe you're fully informed on that. The Auburn Sewer District took out a $4 million bond to begin that process that will be over the next, the next few years anyway, as they continue moving forward with that surge tank initiative. The request that came through from the Sewer District was that the city would contribute $1.5 million in ARPA funds for this project. Basically, that will decrease the rate, increase that'll be handed down to the tax, to those ratepayers, which would be 9.5% is the current rate increase that will begin on October 1st and possibly a 7% increase in 2025. If a $1.5 million of ARPA funds are allocated, that would decrease it to 4.5% this year and then 6.6% in 2025. That's about $22 a year savings with that $1.5 million allocation per a residential sewer customer and for what the Auburn, City of Auburn spends on all of our properties, including schools, would be about $2,800 a year. Yeah, Mike Broadbent here, if you had some questions too, came from the Sewer Department. Answer any questions and we certainly have Counselor Milks who serves on that board as well to answer any questions about that project. But I want to give you an opportunity to discuss that. If that's something that the Council is interested in, we can make sure that that is brought back before you at a future meeting. And currently, you have, you'd have, we're hitting right under, just under $3 million probably in the ARPA account currently that's left. So that's where you're at for a balance, so. Mike, you want to go ahead and come up?
Sure. Is that $3 million, including the deposit we're getting this week?
That's correct.
Left to allocate.
Left to allocate, that's right. That's certainly not what we've expended, that's what's left to allocate.
I certainly appreciate you folks considering this as...
Phil.
I called you Phil, sorry. Mentioned we're looking at a 9.5% rate increase in October. Were to get this, we could reduce that by 5%. 5% rate increase reduction would save about $176,000 a year to all ratepayers over the life of our bond for the $4 million. It's a 20-year bond. That would save ratepayers about $3.5 million. So it's considerable when you look at it from that perspective, you know, by reducing this by 5% because when this rate goes up, that's perpetuity, that rate increase. So it is a good way to offset that.
Questions for Mike or where we're at? Counselor? Sorry, Mayor.
When you talk about the lump sum that's paid as a savings for taxpayers, as a guesstimate, how much would it save each individual? I mean, I know the rates fluctuate.
So it's going to be $22 a year per residential. Our largest customer, which I'm not going to disclose their name, going to save them about $9,600 a year and as Phil mentioned, the City of Auburn would save about $2,800 a year. But all told, all customers together, it's about $176,000 a year.
Thank you.
For those who may not recall, this is a joint effort that'll be taking place with LAPKA, so that means we're currently looking at about 30% of the cost will be on Auburn. 70% is on Lewiston for the cost of this storage, storage-containing unit.
Phil, refresh my memory, and whatever the Council decides, if we want to look at this further, we need to know what the deliverable date is. Obviously, bonds are being procured. Once you buy bonds, you can't prepay, well, it's harder to prepay. That initial cost sharing is reset on an annual basis, I believe?
I think every three, right?
Every three years based upon actual contribution of the overflow?
Storm surge flow.
Once we have the new Everett Little built, that significantly reduces our storm flow, correct?
Correct.
So it's going to reset again in 2025, 2026? Our facility opens in 2023, so that means our 30% is going to go down because I believe, again, correct me if I'm wrong, 60 or 70% of our overflow was directly related to the old ELTIS.
It certainly is a lot, but it's also, keep in mind, Lewiston will be taking some steps as well, but we would guess that, all things being equal, removing the old high school off and creating the new stormwater separation from the new high school, you're going to see a considerable decrease.
I think the question of the Council is, excuse me, Mike, what's your timeline on this for decision-making?
So construction of the tank is in the next three to five years. The upfront costs are rolling in now, they're doing geotechnical data, they're doing the design. We're going to be expending our $4 million bond over the next two to three years. Any contribution that we would get, such as an ARPA contribution, would go into directly offset what we're going to be paying back on our bond. So again, we would, instead of raising our rates 9.5% this year, knowing we were going to get those funds, you know, we would, you know, only do a 4.5% rate increase.
What's your fiscal year, start?
It would start this year.
When?
We're on a calendar year basis, so we start January 1st.
So January 1, 2023.
We have to, we're going to vote in July, our July meeting on approving the rate increase.
Right, and that rate increase will go into effect in October of 2022.
So you're running on a fiscal year starting October 2022, October 1st.
That's just when we're resetting our rates, but our budget runs on a calendar year basis.
When would we have to turn over the 1.5 million if we agree to this?
If you agree to allocate it, we would make sure that those funds were allocated within, I believe what they're hoping to do is within this upcoming calendar year for them because we want to make sure that all those dollars are expended by 2024. That needs to be expended for the federal requirement.
And you said the 20-year ROI on this, Mike, was about a 4:1? 1.5 invested saves ratepayers?
Right, saves ratepayers about 3.5 million, yep.
So 1.5, 2.25, so it's basically 2.25, 2.5 to 1 ROI. I mean, from a financial standpoint, and when you're thinking about a tangible ROI versus intrinsic ROI, this isn't strong. 2.25 ROI on money invested over the course of 20 years is fairly weak from an investment standpoint. That's debatable though, obviously depending on what your priorities are, but for example, if that 1.5 million was invested in a project that could generate $10 million in taxable value, that would be a quarter-million-dollar annual tax bill, for example, over the course of 10 years, that's 2.5. You know, 20 years and so forth, it grows exponentially. That's as quick back-of-the-hand math. So I think it's something to think about. I guess it's up to the Council on whether you want to bring this up in a relatively quick amount of time and if so, there's going to be a lot of planning and, you know, comparison that needs to be done to see if this is a smart investment of really what is left of a finite resource.
Question on the bond itself. I wonder if that bond could be used for other purposes because what I'm thinking is rates are going to go up and so if you substitute this to reduce the cost of that bond, but then you have other needs that you could shift the bond over to at a lower rate because presumably that's why you did the bond now, to get a better rate before they are going up.
Have you done the bond already? Have you secured the bond?
Yep.
You've already purchased a bond?
Yep.
It's up to the Council, if you want to, if you all want to see it. We can go through our normal, think about this and...
Yeah, I don't need an answer now. I have a couple councils I want to bring this forward on July 18th weekend.
Okay, very good then. Is there any other questions for Mike?
Just real quick, you said that was a meeting in July. What's your meeting date in July?
It's the third Tuesday. I think it's the 19th through the 20th.
So the Council will make that determination by the 18th. So the council will make that determination by the eighteenth, which will be before you.
That's great. Thank you.
It's the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, yep. Twenty is the water.
Two more that I, thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Two more that I want to bring up to you. Jay's going to do one in a second. The other one was, the Conservation Commission has identified a grant that they feel that we should really take a look at. And this is regarding Fish Passage Barrier Removal Grant. They've come to you and they, when they gave you your, their update, I think it was in February or March, they, they did talk about the Littlefield Dam, and they talked about grant opportunities that might come available, what that would look like, and how we could potentially remove that dam, which would then eliminate that fish barrier that takes place. They did identify a grant writer that could write a grant for us, went back and forth with Councilor Staples, Councilor Warren, I think, is included in those discussions, and Councilor Walker. It looks like, once I took a look at what the fund would, how much the cost would be, it's about ten thousand dollars roughly for the grant writer to go ahead and submit that application by August fifteenth. I did meet with the Finance Director. One that we would recommend is rather than use ARPA funds, originally we were looking at ARPA funds, rather than using ARPA funds, we do have salary reserve funds within this fiscal year that we could go ahead and allocate to secure that grant writer and go ahead and submit that grant. Based on the federal funding that's coming out, we do stand a very good chance of receiving those funds, based on how many of these they're looking to remove. And so I think that this is a recommendation that I would move forward with. As long as I don't hear anything different than that, I will go ahead and make that allocation and not use ARPA funds for this request.
Does this have to come back to us in order?
It doesn't. This is something I could just do with, you, you allocate funds for grant writing and special professional services, so I would just use those funds.
How much is the grant?
Well, Eric, do you know what it could potentially be?
Part of the effort will be to figure out the budget on this particular dam, whether it could be a multiple.
And the grant, from my understanding, is non-matching federal funds, so.
A true grant.
A true grant. So removing the Littlefield Dam is that final barrier that's kind of been holding up the works with the Upper and Lower Barker. And it's an opportunity to remove that for pennies on the dollar here. We just need a, a professional application put in, and I think we can allocate some funds.
Yeah, but what I keep hearing over and over again is this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this kind of non-matching funds for, for ten thousand dollars. It's a no-brainer.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and I'll take those steps to make that happen. We'll secure that PO and get that done. The last one is typically we try to workshop ARPA funds before they come before you. You'll see that this one here is on the agenda. We did talk about it at the, early on in the ad hoc work group, we talked about op-boxes, talked about being able to have good access to the river, recreational access to the river. It took a little while to finally get to a point where we were able to secure an opportunity for one of these boxes to be built. They are in high demand. Jay has been working with a relationship with op-box as well as LL Bean to bring some recreational activity to the river at Festival Plaza. So I wanted him to give you a, just a brief overview of that before you have that as an order tonight at the meeting.
So there's, there's actually two things. There's this kayak rental opportunity here as well as op-box. Op-box, LL Bean uses them, the, the State of Maine is, they're going to put these op-boxes in all of the state parks, and then LL Bean's or, and other companies supply outdoor gear so that the people can rent it out or take it out, that type of thing. So the idea being that these boxes can be moved, but there aren't wheels on them, so it's not easy for somebody to come and steal the whole box. So we can put this op-box with recreational fishing rods and different things like that, cornhole for when we do a brew fest or whatever, put it right in Festival Plaza and have it there from, let's say, May through October. And then when we get to a point where we want to do the ice rink over at the Powell Center or Anniversary Park or someplace, we can move it over there and, again, get outfitters to supply skates that we can loan out to people and then serve like hot chocolate, that type of stuff. So this first box that we're looking at has multiple uses for it. If you recall, our downtown revitalization plan, one of the things that we talked about being able to do was use like storage containers to create like an instant little pop-up village for stores and that type of thing. Our first op-box will be for the recreational, but if it works as well as we believe it will and has in other communities, then we can get other op-boxes and you can create a whole little community. Let's say, for example, we still struggle to sell the pad site in Anniversary Park, then we can create a little village there and have small entrepreneurs sell their wares and things out of that. This, but again, this very first op-box is to help us engage the river and downtown as part of our events when we do like our upcoming Brews and Blues Festival, that type of thing. People can go down and start fishing, that type of thing. The other thing that we came up with is we had wanted to be able to loan out kayaks, but that's a fairly labor-intensive thing. So we came across this opportunity with rent.fund, and what this is, is they've, it's a kayak rack that's in a secure cage. People can rent a kayak with their credit card and take it out and use it in, in the river. We've had multiple meetings with police, fire, and Brookfield as well as Jeremy with Rec, poking holes in this and talking about what are the liabilities, this, that, and the other thing. We think with signage and a few other things, we're all set there. When an end user slides their credit card, there's an indemnification that happens through this company, so that it's leaving the, the city not responsible. We will still probably have Mike Malloy do an extra, you know, some wording beyond that. But so far, police and fire feel they can work with this. They've given us some strong suggestions that will follow. We talked with Brookfield, they are not against this at all. They really like the idea. And the way this works is it's about twenty thousand dollars. If you get a four rack, four kayaks, it's about sixteen thousand. If you get the eight, it's twenty-six thousand. But that guarantees that the rack will sit there. Our plan is to put it down like behind Gritty's, and it's guaranteed to be there for four years, I mean, five years. And you do a revenue share of fifty-fifty revenue share with the company. The company has to leave it there. If there's not a single kayak rented during that whole time, they still got to keep it there. And if you're super busy, then, then of course you end up with some level of revenue share. Now, communities our size, in other parts of the country, when they do this, they're raising altogether about eighteen thousand dollars so that, a year, so nine goes to the community, nine goes to rent.fund. I think this is a great opportunity, because I know we had in the past, we brought in an outfitter who was trying to rent kayaks, and it just wasn't quite enough business. This will give people the opportunity to do it. It's not staff-intensive. We can promote this during our various events, and it really helps us engage the river. So what, what we're asking for, for the ARPA funds is, there are two very similar things, and they're meant, they, they fit right in with our downtown revitalization plan. These op-boxes come in different shapes and sizes. This is an example of one that hasn't been branded yet, but shows how it can load on. This is the one that LL Bean used this past winter when they had their skate rink. This is one that's being used in Portland for a pop-up restaurant. This is just showing you, Jen and I went to their facility in Nobleboro. These are made with recycled plastic, and they're structurally insulated panels, but they're not like the ones that you're probably envisioning. These are very rugged, very solid panels, so you can't kick through it, you can't break into it. There's I-beams underneath that are made actually out of recycled plastic that have the same tensile strength as steel I-beam, so you can pick it up easily, it can move with a, just a forklift. Here's an example of a recreational op-box. Ours would be slightly bigger and, and would incorporate some electricity so we can use it to, like a concession stand. This is an example of how you could do the shelving. I'm going to put the thing here, the shelving, so that it's, all of these slats, you can change how you put, display the equipment in the box. I think if we're able to do this, it helps us with our ability to recruit partners to the city, because they already have working relationships with like LL Bean, Cabela's, Bass Pro Shop, the State of Maine Parks and Rec System. The nice thing is, would be the first municipality doing this. These are being used like in Portland for different things, but it's individual businesses using them. So I think it helps us with the marketing as well. And they provide such flexibility that, anyways, I should probably stop talking and ask if anybody has questions.
I would just add one more thing. So the reason why this is on the agenda for you tonight is for us to, because the state is also looking at op-box and putting these, we have to get our order in. If we don't get our order in, then we're going to miss a season. And so that's why it's been for you tonight, and why we didn't have a chance to, to workshop it fully and then bring it on for a future agenda. But it's certainly, you know, a project that I think council should get consideration to.
What's the part, could you go a little bit in detail about the partnership with LL Bean on this?
Well, we, so we're still in, in conversations. The way we got to get in and really have conversations with LL Bean was because op-box was already in a partnership with them, so that's how we got the entree in. Our end goal would be that LL Bean is doing like their fly fishing school down here on the river, that they start doing their, like they already have mountain biking classes and things, workshops, that they would start doing those types of things at Mount Appetite and all of that. It's far too early for me to say, they're definitely doing mountain biking, they're definitely doing this, they're definitely doing that.
But the op-box is your, your movable headquarters for these activities?
Right, right. And, and what I can tell you from my experience, working in economic development down in the Roanoke area, we didn't have op-box, but it's not going to be a big challenge getting outfitters to donate some equipment as long as they get to get their label, their logo and things on there. Personally, I would like it to be LL Bean, because it's a Maine-based company and the story with where Gritty's is, is where the original LL Bean store was. So there's all that marketing around it, but, you know, if for some reason they can't do it, it's not going to be a challenge to get Bass Pro Shop or Cabela's.
Hear that, LL Bean, Cabela's?
Just, you know, motivates them.
Well, and I'm not saying that as some kind of, you know.
Oh, I will, I will, we will.
It's a revenue share, that's where the cost to us is.
Well, so the revenue share is with the rent.fund, because that's a, I think it's about, we can set the price, the sweet spot seems to be about fifteen dollars to rent a kayak, and that's a revenue share. These, these op-boxes, we can come up with a program where we're actually leasing or renting equipment out and all of that, but what we'd really rather do is use it as a way it ties in with our 2019 strategic plan as well as our downtown revitalization plan, where it's saying, get people using outdoor recreation, create the connection. So I would hate to put, you know, move it in the winter over to the Powell Center and say to the kids, okay, you got to rent this stuff.
No, no, but how much does it cost us?
So the op-boxes, depending on what we get for bells and whistles, are twenty thousand, but you can get up into fifty and things, but that's, that's if they're getting kitchens and all that kind of stuff.
Twenty to fifty?
Yeah.
Plus you have the electrical hookup.
Right.
To set up in the pad.
There's, and there's, you can have it set up so that instead of a regular key entry, you've got an app on your phone, so we can control that. And the same with the kayak rental. Brookfield would be able to shut down the kayak rental if they have an emergency or something happening. We can shut it down for like the winter when it doesn't make sense, if there's times when there's going to be high flow. I think we would shut it down every night before sunset, you know, and open it up, and it's all remote and timed.
If this is going to be the first one, with the potential of, as it, this is really a test pilot program.
Yeah, yeah.
Find out exactly what the types of uses are in different areas. You probably want, I would probably think that you'd want this as outfitted as possible, so it has as much flexibility.
Right.
So you can test out, and then in the future, if we needed one that's more specific and at a lesser price, we can do that.
Yeah.
You know?
So, and what we did is Jamie, Jeremy put together a spreadsheet for us of equipment that Parks and Rec would like to see in there, based off of its equipment they don't have, plus it seems to be, you know, in high demand type of thing. We share that with the outfitters, and then when I was showing you the box and how it's got those, it's sort of like the same as your garage system, where you hang the panel and there's little slats and you can do whatever. So there would be about five thousand dollars worth of equipment out of the gate in there, whether it's fishing equipment or cornhole or some of these other games and things, so we.
So what was the total amount in the order that's coming up tonight? Hundred thousand, wasn't it?
Hundred thousand, but that, what that is, is covering the kayak, the op-box, some of the costs surrounding both of those. And then the ability, I do not imagine that this op-box is going to be any kind of failure, so we'd be able to then order right after that the next one.
And this is obviously, so there is a, this is for, you know, people and recreation, so it's a direct benefit to the community.
Mm-hmm.
Second, there's a potential for an ROI through sponsorships and events.
Right.
So hard to quantify. The kayaks are pretty clear.
And I think we've had some conversations with other companies that are also looking at like for mountain bikes, same thing, setting up a rack, being able to take a mountain bike, be able to hit a trail. And so we've had conversations with them, being able to demonstrate that this is a, you know, a project that works well in a community, maybe what it takes to get someone to actually decide to go ahead and set their mountain bikes up, a rack, and you can take a mountain bike out at different locations that we might want to set up. And some of them are set up so that you could take it from one location, use it, and return it to another location. Some of you have seen that across a lot of communities.
I mean, our, our end game would be that if we get some of the projects and businesses that, that we hope to be able to announce in the next few weeks and months in the downtown area, that we get revitalized enough, and in the meantime, we're doing this to, to get interest going, that I would love it if suddenly we were able to, because we had so much business and so much going on, that we were able to take that rack and pull it and let somebody run a kayak rental business. You know, the, the end game is to get it out into the private sector so they can make money. It's just, right now, there's just not enough business or traffic to do that. So this is a low, low investment way to get it started.
So you'll have that on the agenda for tonight?
We could talk about it a little bit more tonight. There's any last questions? Yeah?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, for the kayak rental thing, where you were just talking about possibly having something in the downtown to replace it. I wonder, do you have the opportunity to move this at a different location?
Yes. So this is similar to op-box. This is screwed into a cement pad so that somebody doesn't just take it away on you. But we could move this then over to Anniversary Park or to some other, some other area. The other thing too, that is an option, we talked to the owners of, of this, is that if somebody wanted to actually run a business, and we were three years into this, that we could hand, we could do some paperwork. hand, we could, through some paperwork, change the partnership over to that private sector person who wants to run a whole business and set up there and all that.
I have one quick question. Where it's a fifty percent kinda split, is that also assume fifty percent liability?
No, no. The liability goes with rent dot fund, that's what they, when they swipe their credit card, they get the verbiage of that. Of course, we're a municipality, so the municipalities are very suitable, so we were talking with Mike Malloy about an additional rider that goes on top of that.
Councilmore?
Uh, just for clarification, Jay, so we're looking at a five-year lease on rent dot fund, and, what is it, op box?
Op box.
Op box.
Opportunity box.
That is something we would purchase outright.
This is, we would purchase, own it outright.
What's the expectation on the lifespan, and do we have any idea?
Yeah, so...
Because I've only seen one, and it was that LL Bean, and it was used to great effect.
Yeah, yeah. And keep in mind, so the, the outer skin of those can be designed any way you want, so like the LL Bean one, they, just to make it fit in, they did a board and batten.
Mm-hmm.
But the actual material that's there is like any other styrofoam, in the sense that stuff lasts forever, so these have like, as far as the actual panels and all that goes, is over a five-hundred-year lifespan of it. Now granted, your locks, your doors, all those would have to be changed and things, but this company is about five years old, so we don't have the real knowledge of where that would be.
Well, when you describe this to, I'm thinking of what you've alluded to, like with what LL Bean does, I believe it's called their Discoverer series.
Yeah.
And it's really cool.
Yeah.
And it's happening in communities all around us.
Yeah.
An old friend of ours, Mike Henry, who's a director of, or the head of the business department at the community colleges, is a guide and teaches kayaking through the Discoverer series.
Yeah, and so this, this gives us that opportunity to have the equipment there on a regular basis, and we can, depending on who the outfitter is that steps up, I mean, I like the idea of, if it's LL Bean, that we brand that all about LL Bean and everything, we get that cachet of LL Bean being downtown, and then we throw also our seal on there, so we know it's a partnership. But it, again, I don't wanna make big promises about who we partner with and this and that, but this is our entree into it, and our worst-case scenario that I see, just based off of my experience in Roanoke, is that if for some crazy reason we can't get LL Bean on board, we'll be able to get Bass Pro Shop or Cabela or somebody.
Well, there's a lot of opportunities, I'm thinking about our friend Leroy over here, he's got a beautiful ice rink they set up in the winter, and if there were, you know, skate rentals available.
Skates, right, and so that's what...
And I like the modular, you know, characteristics of those.
Yeah, yeah, it's something that Public Works, and it's can, they're able to pick it up, put it on a flatbed truck and move it, but it's not so movable that your average person's gonna run off with it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like this, because it could also be a springboard to do some smaller pop-ups.
Yes.
Especially around this parking lot, on the other side of the parking lot.
Yes, yes. So, and that's, let me see if we've got... They changed their website on me. But they had an example of, you get like five or six of these, and you put it in like a U shape, and you can get different businesses to set up, and it's a low entry for a business. You can either provide it for free, or the rent is like a hundred bucks a month or something. And once they get themselves established, then you try to, you know, segue them into a regular brick and mortar spot. And so this is something, right now, because my charge is downtown, I'm thinking downtown, I'm thinking New Auburn, I'm thinking this area, but that does not mean it couldn't be moved out to Mount Appetite or some other part of the city, as we engage each part of the city, please.
Or even Plattsfield or Great Falls Plaza.
Right, right.
That would be a great spot.
So, thank you. So we'll, we have obviously more discussion during the order time, so we'll move on. But lastly, order upon approval by council, when is delivery date?
So we would, our goal would be to get them in mid-August, so that we can do a actual big slash grand announcement during the September ten Brews and Blues Festival, so people can use the kayaks and use the fishing rods and...
So the kayaks will be also available by end of summer, midsummer?
All of this, according to just our, just before I left for vacation last week, that was the timeline, and they said if, if you tell us that you're ready, we can do these in six weeks.
Perfect, okay. Thank you very much, we'll talk more when it comes up on the agenda later on this evening.
Okay.
Next agenda item? Or is there anything else on ARPA, Phil?
Uh, that's it on ARPA.
Okay. So next, we're talking about street trees. We have Public Works Director Dennis Toit.
All right, so Dennis is gonna come up, I asked Dennis to come just to talk about, his department will be the one that will implement this. One thing that's in your packet under the workshop, you do have a couple policies, I wanted to demonstrate that Public Works has policies that dictate the workload and efforts that they do regarding dealing with trees, shrubs, all that work. Dennis, can you bring that up? Just scroll down to the next item, after those. And the ordinance, you've had, you had a discussion on this already, the street tree ordinance, Dave Griswold came in, gave a presentation, along with Councilor Staples. This also went to the Sustainability Board, they took a look at this, provided some really good feedback, I thought, with some of the discussion that took place there, so this ordinance is coming back before you for consideration. You allocated in the budget about twenty-five thousand dollars towards street trees, and the initiative there would be that we do have several things that are impacting the community as far as ensuring that we are replacing our, our, our trees that are on our streets, how that impacts development, what that requirement will be, this ordinance takes care of that. So Dennis, I don't know if you wanna hit some of those highlights?
Sure. So in, thank you, City Manager Kroll, I think that he covered the, the ordinance components. I think that the ordinance does provide us with, one, the requirements of maintaining an inventory, this is something that you'll see if you looked at our packet, we did provide those policies, it's something that we already do, but by providing this, I think it does take it, I guess, to another level of maintaining that inventory, that information, that data, so that we, we can provide a more sustainable, excuse me, street tree program. One of the, one of the aspects, two policies, like I said, that included, one is our actual maintenance of street trees, how we maintain those, the proper way to do that. All of this work has also included the Forest Board over the years, I wanna certainly recognize their work in this, because it's been very helpful to us, building our own arborist program over the years, it's gotten better and better with their support and engagement, and then I think this ordinance just continues to build on that. So we have our maintenance SOP, again, how we maintain those, but the other SOP that we included in there was our asset management SOP, and this is, so we consider trees an asset to the city, just like any other asset, and they all require a maintenance plan and a program to make sure that we get the longest life out of those trees, we're getting a return on that investment, so to speak, of making sure we're not putting trees in and not maintaining them to, for their long, the longevity and getting the most benefit in terms of quality and life improvements and beautification of our city and that. So the asset management component is critical, I know you've heard about it, we have a major asset management project that we are kicking off. I did review back in March, you got an update on this discussion, and back in March, I believe, Dave Griswold provided the, we had five thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine trees inventoried back in 2018. The reality of the asset management, and why I shared that, or I think it's important we had it in there, is we haven't updated that inventory in four years. And so the reality is, we don't have accurate data, and I think that's part of that asset management, is to bring that up and maintain that going forward. So again, we're making data-driven decisions around our trees, or whatever those assets may be, but certainly for this conversation, we wanna make sure we're putting the money where it needs to be in an appropriate place. So those are our policies, again, I think that, that support that, and I think I'd open it up to, to questions or concerns.
Probably the final thing, and I know you've already had this presentation, but final thing would be that staff has reviewed the ordinance internally, there's no recommendations for any changes.
Councilor Staples, you're the driver of this.
Yeah, sure.
Thoughts on outcome?
Yeah, first, I'd just take a minute to thank Dave Griswold for his leadership on this, I mean, it's just, he's, he's been really helpful, and just, thank you very much. So, yeah, I, I really like the, the ordinance that we've created here, the thing that, to me, stands out the most is that it gives a mechanism for funding street trees, that I think was possibly missing in the existing ordinances. So at the end of every year, the arborist would take a, a stock of lost street trees and budget for those replacements in the next budget cycle, and that, that continues, that's how we're gonna continue to maintain our stock of street trees, so I think that's probably the most important part.
So Mayor, no other questions, this will go to the city attorney for a final review of any ordinance before you vote on it, the attorney will kick that back to us, and as soon as I get back that, get that back from Attorney Malloy, I'll make sure it's on the next agenda item.
Awesome, thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Brian Wood, Assistant City Manager. We're gonna talk about public safety, and an update from the previous workshop. I have a feeling this is gonna be pretty much a monthly, if not bi-weekly occurrence going forward.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council, this is a follow-up to our discussion at our last, at our last workshop. So one of the things that we discussed and that you guys charged us with was coming back before you to kind of talk about the ROI, the return on investment, what this would look like for, for some of the taxpayers, what this would look like in the broad scheme of some of the development that we are looking at moving forward, and so the team, the staff all dug into what that would look like, and so one of the things, and just kind of a really brief recap, what was presented at the last workshop was a, a robust articulation of the work, and how we started the process around public safety building, and how that originated, all the way going back to PD, moving to City Hall on a temporary basis, was it twelve, twelve years ago?
Twelve or thirteen.
Twelve, thirteen years ago, and so, not quite so permanent, but here we are, and as we're looking forward into the next fifty years, since Central's been around for fifty years, what would that look like for the city of Auburn, what would that look like for our public safety buildings? So with that in mind, one of the things that we asked ourselves was, and that Council and Mayor asked us, was what would it look like, or what would the city need to do in order to keep the mill rate kind of flat? And so, so here are a couple of examples or offsets that we looked at, and I think there was a general consensus last time around option one, there were four different options that were presented, or discussed. Option one was truly the option that I think encompassed really all four buildings, if you wanna think about it like that. It had Engine Two, was a completely new building, Engine Five was major, major modernization upgrades, and then I think what's helpful to think about, the public safety building, where Central currently is, is almost thinking about it as two separate buildings that are gonna be joined together, that will allow, obviously, economy of scales in terms of savings, but if we were to go out and build one building today and one building tomorrow, you're gonna see, obviously, a significant increase in cost. So when we think about this large price tag, if you will, at, at forty-seven million, you're really thinking about four different buildings, so I think that that's helpful to think about as well. In this dollar amount as well, there is the assumption that none of the additional offsets that we know to be true are taken into account. So this is if the current taxpayers were taking all of these costs on themselves. Now, we know, we have already secured two-point-five million dollars in federal grant and support, or federal earmark, which would go towards this project. We also know in option one, the nine-one-one center is located in this new building, and we would expect and anticipate that that cost would be, if they do in fact stay in this new building, that that cost would be split between us and Lewiston. So right there, just those two pieces would take the price tag from forty-seven point eight million down to around forty-three point eight million. So already, when we talk about the offset with TIF and offset with realized valuation, those numbers would be a little bit lower. So what would it look like if we wanted to offset the entire cost of the mill rate, assuming no growth within the city? We would need to see approximately two-hundred-and-eight million dollars in, in offsets with TIF. Now, TIFs are unique because, as I'm sure many of you know, there's the ability to set aside fifteen percent in TIF districts towards public safety buildings and, and spending. So that's why this number is so much larger than, than realized valuation if we were looking at just, at just the residential side of things. That also takes into account the reality that when you TIF something, the sheltered amount requires you to take into account other non-governmental entities, so library we're taking into account, or governmental entities, the schools, all of those other entities that we share revenue with. So there would be a little bit more that would need to be made up if we wanted to offset that entire amount with TIFs. Option number one would also require about a hundred and eighty million dollars in realized valuation, as you, I think everybody knows here, the market is changing daily and increasing quite a bit, and so I think the mayor did some really rough math, but that'd be about four hundred new homes, which is definitely not outside the realm of possibility or likelihood at all. And that, again, not taking into account any of the proposed projects that we anticipate are moving forward, anything from BJ's, I think approximately a hundred and eighty units there, and a number of other smaller projects that are, are moving through the pipeline. I think it's important, as we talk about these numbers, just making sure we're talking about assessed valuation versus permitted valuation. I think every year, at least the last four or five years, we've been on upward trajectory of permitted valuation, somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy million dollars north. Now, obviously, that's not a one-to-one ratio, depending on the project, and obviously, a lot of that's also on the commercial side. But all of that said, I think between TIF offsets, which we are currently exploring a number of new projects that might have some TIF components, and in realized valuation and new housing opportunities, and this is not taking into account any additional growth on the commercial side, which we also know and anticipate that there will be some growth on that side, that's kind of what those numbers would look like. Now, obviously, there are some of the unknowns, the assessments, what that's gonna look like, the different types of bonds that we might use to finance this moving forward, again, changes in the commercial sector, revenue sharing with the state, which has dramatically increased, so that's helped on the budget side, Betty, Homestead, so there's a million and one variables, and I think when staff really started digging into it, you know, obviously, those that are steeped in it every day, quickly said, there's too many variables, I can't give you a finite, or a specific answer, but, so we really wanted to speak with, about some of the broad strokes and trends, is what we would need to see to, to help with some of these offsets.
Quick question before we move on?
Yeah.
Is that option one with TIF offset and option one with realized valuation?
No.
Or is it either or? Okay.
Either or. Sorry.
Right. But I just wanted to make sure for clarification.
Yes.
That's or, not and.
No, we don't need $388 million to offset it. Either or. Although, I'd love to see $388 million in valuation. I'd be all right with that. So, how does this, how does this compare with, I think we also talked about if we do nothing?
Right.
And so, we put our heads together and thought about what are all of the elements that we would need to take into account over that same 20-year window of the bond period, and what would the cost be associated with that? And again, these are rough ballparks. This is not taking into account any of the unknowns, which inevitably, over a 20-year period, is going to happen. But one of the things I think that we often may not think about, and I think Chief Chase has spoken to this before, but really, when we talk about the dollar amount associated with the efforts to keep our firefighters, our men and women, safe, there is actually a real dollar amount in terms of workers' comp. Some of the legislation at the state level presumes a number of things, one of which is the presumption of cancer based off of the job and hazardous materials. So, the chief has done a phenomenal job in terms of going out, finding grants, finding opportunities to mitigate that. But at the end of the day, there are just certain structural challenges that we can't overcome just based on the age and the structure of some of our buildings. So, assuming that even some of our new firefighters worked at Engine Five, or Engine Two for a period of time, let's say, we don't go out to bond for that until 2030. Because of the structure of it, because of the age of it, there would easily be a presumption of responsibility if any of them were to develop cancer. And Phil and myself were just sitting on a call earlier last week. And, you know, these claims are real, and I think we all, you know, want to do what's right by, you know, our men and women that are, that are working in these fields. So, that's one piece, if you wanted to put a dollar amount to it. Lost federal funding. Obviously, we talked about the earmark, that $2.5 million. We would not be able to move forward with the project with Central as-is because the moment we started to touch Central, we would have to undergo a major renovation, which would then be millions of dollars just to bring everything up to code, ADA compliance. We'd have to install elevator, all of these things. I think we talked about a little bit at the last, at the last workshop. Staff relocation costs, we spoke about this, but obviously, one of the challenges with PD being here is they take up two floors. And so, obviously, it's not optimal design for them, but it also does dramatically infringe on some of the other services that are here. We've already had to relocate some staff. And so, assuming that that continued, that would also be a cost that would continue. Engine Two, at the end of the day, there's nowhere around it at some point in the nearer term that's going to have to be replaced. It's just not a viable station as-is, or for the foreseeable future. There's not enough renovations that we can do that will make that, that will make that engine viable for another 30 or 40 years. HVAC replacements at Central, I think we spoke about that, and you've seen that in the HVAC assessment. Energy efficiency savings, Central Five and Two, no matter how much we want to renovate them and how much money we spend in there to make them energy efficient, the structure and design of them just is not as energy efficient as it would be in a new building. So, that's opportunity lost. And then, one thing that I don't know that we've thought about a great deal, but PD takes up a little more than 35 parking spaces in our current garage. Each one of those spaces has a cost. And as we're talking about some of the economic development that we want to see downtown, we're talking about a number of the new businesses that we want here. One of those pieces is parking. And one of the designs and ideas when we originally built the garage and that we would expect is that that would be available for the public to use. And that's obviously not going to be the case. Even if we move PD around, there's still just limited spots there. And so, those costs are going to be shifted to the developers, which would then come back to us in some form or fashion, whether that's a credit enhancement or it's some other offset to make up for those spots that we don't have access to. Not to mention the operational inefficiencies by leaving them where they are, even if we did move them up, let's say, on the third or fourth floor, not to mention, I don't think they would be a huge fan of that. So, all of that to say, and these are just, I'm sure there are even more costs that we have not accounted for. But to stay as-is, we're looking at 13 to 16.3 million. So, when you take that from the true number of at least 43.8 million, once you've taken into account the earmark money and split with Lewiston, we're really talking about a delta of $27.5 million for four buildings. So, if you break that down per building, that's about a little less than 8 million. I think some of our members on the ad hoc committee, and I think Counselor Lanning went out to Brunswick and saw what they recently built for 13, 13.5, 14 million. That was just one station.
Yeah, that was just the fire station. And they had not too long ago built a separate police station. And they're both on Route One, which is high-value real estate. So, their costs are not only high for the two stations, but then losing tax revenue on valuable street frontage on Route One. So, I think this is a smarter way to go, certainly.
Absolutely. And we are continuing to look at and explore other opportunities as well. We, Andy Titus is on our ad hoc committee and sent an email this, this weekend saying, you know, are there opportunities for some additional partnerships and grants with the state for locating the County Emergency Management Agency or some additional opportunities there? So, I mean, there's going to be a number of opportunities that we continue to explore throughout this to continue to try and help offset some costs. I think the committee has really driven home, and you'll see in the final recommendation from the committee, a really strong emphasis on looking for other ways to offset the cost and looking to make sure that we're really being realistic in what some of the growth projections are going to be. But I think we've definitely done that. And the chiefs have really dug in to each and every inch and nook and cranny to shave down, make sure that this isn't viewed as a Cadillac. I think the chief is, I think both chiefs have articulated that any smaller or any, any less and, you know, we're going to really be doing ourselves a disservice and is almost going to render it non-functional before we even, before we even move in. So, oh, and just... So, with that, chiefs have anything they would like to add or any additional questions?
I would just say, Council, Mayor, and also for the public listening, we will be setting up some public information sessions regarding this in the near future. So, you'll be, the team here will be taking this out on the road in their presentation. We want to make sure that's a good opportunity for the public to take a look at the renderings, have conversations with the team, the committee, and certainly the staff that's been part of this as well, so they can get a really good understanding of this project. There's, it's very complex. We've got a lot of moving pieces with this. When we talk about three fire stations and a police station, then what are the, what are the other opportunities that come as we continue? And we'll have more conversations with the City of Lewiston when it comes to the dispatch center. I've already had conversations with the city administrator. And there are some other options regarding dispatch with the space that Lewiston has over in Lewiston that we'll explore and consider that. And as Counselor Titus, I think, brought up regarding county emergency management, you know, depending on what takes place with the sheriff's department, the sheriff's already stated that there's no room for county EMA in that space. And so, that is something that we should probably explore and take a look to see if there's space for us, for them rather, in our facility, how we can do that. It's a good partnership and good collaboration moving forward.
And, and one last thing I would say, and I think that this was a really salient point that we took at our last ad hoc meeting. The engineers were speaking and said, you know, the only thing, the only buildings that are more complex, challenging, and costly than what we're talking about here are hospitals and prisons. And that just really, I think, highlights the complex nature, the unique nature of buildings such as these that are really specific for purpose and, and need. And so, it's not, it's not as simple as I think some other government structures may be. So, I think both chiefs and the ad hoc committee and staff have really done a tremendous job, you know, putting this together and really kind of working through each and every element.
I think the big takeaway here for us to think about and ponder is the ability for us, at our current trajectory of growth, to not impact the taxpayers of Auburn is strong. It's not just, you know, as this council, previous councils have been told before, "Oh, we'll fundraise X dollars or do this to offset..." No, this is legitimate math, doable, trend is already there. So, okay, so it's attainable. And I think that's important for us to balance out the wants and needs of the community with a desire and ability. So, gives us something to shoot for.
Just to clarify, both chiefs feel like there's growth, there's room for growth in this investment?
Yeah, I think it's a sensitive balance between rightsizing and growth. From our perspective, you know, we talk a lot that it allows us operationally in our, in our department to have some flexibility, if you will. But there's also, there's still the potential, depending on where growth pops up in the city. I've said, you know, us scaling, and we're talking, you know, in the five and 10-year window out, there may be the need for an additional substation because of geography, not necessarily because of size. We need to deliver our service in a different way than PD. So, I'll let the chief speak to that because our location depends, our ability to provide a timely service is so much based on our location. But, but for what we're, with our current model and the way the city is and the trends that we've got, I think that this meets our needs in a practical way, pragmatic way.
Yeah, that's a great point, though. I mean, population is one thing, but 65 square miles, an area mass larger than Portland, South Portland, Cape Elizabeth, and Westbrook combined.
Right.
So, if you think about what their public services outlay is, so to speak, compared to ours.
I would guess if you're, if we were to, this Central. And you put another fire station out in somewhere else.
I'm a firm believer that, you know, the best delivery models for such a geographically diverse city as we are is to have one and two company stations in the right locations in your city, right? So, Central needs, I think, even in moving into the future, needs to be able to accommodate those two companies, your admin staff, and then support equipment. But that, as your city grows, if it grows geographically, you might have the needs for other, other things within the city.
And I think, you know, this allows us to plan for the future as well. This does allow us some growth. And we've talked about projections for the future as population grows and service demands change. And for this site, it is centrally located within the city. We're not as location-based reliant due to the equipment we have in the cars and a lot of things we can do right from the car. And, you know, we also talked about in these substations, adding an office space for PD to be able to go there and work and stay within their response zones. So, but looking forward to the future, this really, you know, meets our current demand, but also allows us that growth potential as well.
There we go.
That's it, Mayor. Get a little break before the meeting.
Little break. Six minutes. We'll reconvene in the council chambers. Thank you very much, all.
The clouds, the artistic rendering has some...
Thank you, President.
They've been doing a lot of police and fire.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you very much for joining us here for our June 27th regular city council meeting. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
In just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight are the minutes from the June 6 regular council meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve is second.
I got a motion to approve. I have a second from Councilor Walker. All those in favor? Approved by a vote of seven zero. Next is communications. Any council communication? Start off to my left, Councilor Staples.
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Walker?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmoren?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Whitey?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update about the community gardens, especially Newbury Street. Even though because of family illness, I haven't been able to, to garden like I'd like to. I was, I stopped by the other day and there's a lot of people that put an awful lot of hard work and it looks like it's going to be a bumper year for the vegetable gardens.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
Nothing.
The only thing I'd like to report is we are hosting two community conversations, one being July 12th at 5:30. That will be held at Walton School. The second one will be July 13th at Fairview School in the gym. Walton will be in the cafeteria. The purpose of the conversation is a 20-minute, or excuse me, a zoning and it's practical application to our downtown and suburban areas of the city. Approximately be about an hour and a half. Consists of a 20-minute presentation to bring everybody up to speed, followed by questions and answers, then individual conversations with myself and any counselors that are there. So encourage everybody to get out there. There has been some press about it. And please keep talking about this within your neighborhoods so we can have and engage civilly the public in this pretty significant change. Next, open session. First open session of the night. Anybody from the public would like to speak, please come to the podium. Give us your name and address and limit your comments to approximately three minutes about any topic of business that is not on tonight's agenda.
Scott Berry, 179 Davis Avenue. Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, I'm here tonight to finish my statement about the acreage near Lake Auburn that will be changed from agricultural, agricultural zone and resource protection to a mixed use zone. The last time I was here, I tried to explain how a septic system functions for those who had no idea how a septic system functioned. I hope I did a good job of explaining. I also stated that I would post a short video for those who were curious about septic systems. And I did sponsor a video on Facebook and garnered over 4,000 accounts within two weeks' time. I hope some people gained some kind of insight about how a septic system functions. I would like to share three experiences that I came across with three failed systems. I am in real estate and I've been, I'm going on my ninth year. I came across three failed systems and from them three failed systems, each house had a well. The wells were tested. The wells did not fail. There was nothing wrong with the wells. The septic system did what it was supposed to do. It would be the same around any lake. The state of Maine has a 250-foot buffer zone around waterways. And that, I believe, that's what we've got here, or we've got more than 250 feet down by the Lake Auburn, we're going to change the acreage. And that's what I guess that, but I wanted everybody to understand that the wells did not get contaminated because of septic's failed system. I would like to voice my suggestions as to what the planning board could require the developer to do when and if they come before the planning board. Test wells could be placed at the property boundaries closest to the lakeside and monitored periodically from time to time upon the wishes of the planning board. The board also could require the developer to set up an escrow account to pay for the tests for so many years. I know Auburn doesn't like to charge contractors money. But from where I come from, contractors do pay their fair share. The planning board could also require that the developer set up an association for the sole purpose of monitoring the individual septic systems when the development to ensure that there is no failed systems.
Sorry, you're out your three minutes, sir.
Excuse me?
You're out your three minutes.
I'm done?
Well, you, yeah, everybody's three, but I will say, if you have something written down, please, we'll give it to the clerk and we can look at it at a latter point.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, thank you very much for coming and speaking. If that's a sugarloaf, Vesc, no.
Sugarloaf.
We'll let it slide this time.
My name is Jim Lynch. I'm a resident of 80 Shepley Street, along with my wife Jennifer, who is present. And as a resident of Auburn, I have some concerns about this current change in residential neighborhoods. I'm concerned about the development of multi-family units, up to 14 units per acre. I'm concerned about services, personnel services, such as a tattoo parlor, a hairdresser. On Shepley Street, they narrowed the street by four and a half feet 10 years ago for drainage, for rain drainage. And when we have a garage sale on Shepley Street, if they park on both sides of the street, it's very difficult to maneuver down the middle of the road. So, you know, Shepley Street being a part of this T4B, I have a concern of development, of the development of the neighborhood where it may be encroaching, I feel, in a residential area where we enjoy the pursuit of happiness in our own neighborhood after a hard day of work in a commercialized area. It's nice to come home to a quiet neighborhood. And I think a lot of my neighbors feel the same way. Thank you.
And I encourage you, if you can, so we can have, we can't have a dialogue with city council during public comment. We couldn't like try to ascertain or help you answer some of your questions. It's just the rules of the council.
Yeah, I'm just making a comment.
No, 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 I get, but I mean, these are great talking points. And if you could show up to Fairview on the 13th?
I'll be there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry about the audio. We're trying to fix it. Anybody else in the public? None? Close this open session. We'll move on to new business. First on new business is order 89-06272022, amending order 68-06062022, previously adopted by the Auburn City Council on June 6, 2022, regarding the first council meeting in July. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Council Staples, second, Staples. Second by Council Whitey. Open this up for public for comment. Basically, this is just canceling our meeting for July 11th, excuse me, July 5th. And so our first scheduled meeting will be July 11th. Okay? Any member of the public like to speak? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel? Nothing? I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None being? Passes seven zero. Next is order 90-06272022, approving the mass gathering quest for the Liberty Festival scheduled for Monday, July 4, 2022. This is a public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Council Gary, second from Council Mills. Open this up to the public. Public, this is in reference to July 4th. It's Independence Day. Forget everybody knew that one. Counsel, questions? Glad to see it happening again. Anybody here from the Liberty Festival? Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Just so we know, we did allocate money annually, we have been, for fireworks and are a big sponsor promoter. And thank you for getting this done. All those in favor? Seven zero. Next, order 91-06272022, authorizing the city clerk to waive the $60 business license fee. It's a temporary food service license fee, as requested by an Auburn resident, Beth Woodhead, who'd like to sell whoopee pies to raise funds for the Auburn School Department's Odyssey of Mind, Odyssey of the Mind, excuse me.
Motion go pro.
Council Mills?
Second.
Second.
Councilmoren? Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, anybody want to deny a fundraiser? I didn't think so. All those in favor? Seven zero passes. Next is order 92-06272022, which is adopting the home consortium agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Council Staples, second by Council Walker. Open this up to the public for comment. This is an annual, just as a little background, this is an annual agreement, okay? Oh, every three years, that Glenn Holmes is going to actually go into a little bit more detail so we all know.
So historically, the city of Lewiston, Auburn have had this agreement. It's been renewed several times over the last few decades. Basically sets up the process for us to share the home funds we get from HUD. Auburn is the member that's in charge of the consortium. Lewiston is this, the, just a regular member. The only real change to this document this year is we historically, we get 10% for an administrative fee. It's allowed out of the entire home funds. Historically, we've gotten 4%, and then the other 6% were divided three to three. This year, we're taking 4%, I'm sorry, 5%, and then splitting the remaining five, two and a half, two and a half, as we're taking on some additional responsibility for the underwriting of some of the projects.
Okay, very good. Any public discussion? None. Bring it back to the council, counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to abstain from this. It's not a, I don't view it as a true conflict, but I am Vice President of the Auburn Housing Development Corp., which is the CHODO that's identified in the Community Housing Development Organization, which is identified in the agreement. And so even though I derive no personal benefit because I am an officer in that, I think it's cleaner to just abstain.
Fair enough, fair enough. Maybe I'll have a chance to vote. Any other, any other comments or questions on this? Okay, I would like to know a little bit more at a latter point about the CHODOs and everything like that. I think that's interesting, how we have some nonprofits that actually execute some of the mission outside of Auburn Housing.
Correct. There's a certain portion of the money from the home funds are set aside by regulation to be used by a CHODO. So therefore, we can help them either operationally, but mostly for when they do projects that we approve of, to put that money in to help out.
With that, any other comment? None? I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Passes by a vote of six one.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Holmes. I'm sorry, six zero one. Thank you. Next is order 93-06272022. This is allocating 1.6 million of American Rescue Plan funds for the upgrades and or replacement of HVAC systems in our city-owned facilities. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Council Gary, second from Council Whitey. All those in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I skipped a couple. I was running right through that one. But I, the audio's back, so now I'm back and focused. I'm going to open this up to the public for comment. We have a motion on the floor. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? This is, if you remember, a workshop we had last meeting with an independent auditor looking at our HVAC needs. Mr. Titus?
Good evening. Andy Titus, 24 Rubelite Lane. I know I can't ask a question, but hopefully it'll be answered. Are these HVAC upgrades part of the five-year comprehensive, you know, capital improvement plan? Or are any of these new that weren't on that plan? My concern is that I like to see ARPA funds being used to erase future obligations. So I'd really like to see that first before anything new additions, especially the ice arena, which I'm a little concerned that we just bought it a year, two ago, and now we have a major problem with their HVAC system. So, thanks.
Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak? I'll take some questions down and I've got a feeling we could probably answer it because we have some. Any other comments? Before we open up the council, Dan?
Yes, they are within the five-year comprehensive, comprehensive building, in its plan. They are listed in the CIP items. The hate, the Norway Savings Bank Arena, it's not a major renovation. It's basically when that system was turned online, it was never brought online properly, was never commissioned. One of the, essentially the chilling units has never been operational. So the building has continually, while they've maintained the ice surface, is continually struggling to meet the HVAC needs, basically the air change and the cooling. So what this does, it's going, it's essentially a recommissioning of the system to get that fourth unit online so that it operates efficiently. So that if, if you notice in the documents that were provided, the energy consumption has gone up by about 50% in that building over the past several years. And that's because they've maintained the surface of the ice. But to do that, you have to play with the system to do that, that it's not designed to operate that way. So they've made it work and this is going to essentially make it work properly.
Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the council. I'd like to open this up with the two councillors actually brought this forth in the agenda. Council Gary, the Council Whitey, if you have anything to add. We'll open this up to council afterwards.
I, I just think these are, you know, worthwhile expenditures. And while it's unfortunate that, you know, on the ice arena, you know, that, that's a relatively new building, you know, it's, it needs to be done. And commissioning is something that's sadly neglected with new buildings. I imagine this building was probably commissioned, I suspect. And it's run very well. But buildings that spend a lot of money on systems that aren't commissioned, oftentimes this kind of thing happens. So, you know, lesson learned, I guess, but.
With Norway, we're not, we're not necessarily buying new equipment. We're up, we're upsizing some of the fans, but the existing equipment is all staying.
Council Gary, do you have anything or do you want to let it sit?
It's basically the same thing in all the other projects.
Counsel, any other comments or questions while we're waiting? Council Walker?
Yeah, I have one. It's not that I don't believe what you're telling us here, but I would like to hear some of that stuff from a professional that deals with that.
I have some professionals here with me tonight, just for that case.
That's good. I would love to hear some.
No, we're also, at this point, yeah, I mean, I'd rather not do a Q and A. It's a workshop on.
I don't want a Q and A. I just want someone to tell me that changing something at that arena is going to really do the.
Fair enough.
Yep. I can invite up from mechanical services and BIMs who did the audit, Don Bresnahan and Steve Ferguson. I don't know who, you want to speak to Norway or?
Steve will go ahead and, hi, I'm Donald Bresnahan from Building Infrastructure Management Solutions. To my right is Steve Ferguson. Steve is an independent licensed professional mechanical engineer. Steve is a independent licensed professional mechanical engineer who heads up the firm Aris, who was part of a group of engineers that look, went through all of the city buildings. So Councilor, may I have your question again, please?
Up at the Norway Savings Bank Arena, will you explain whatever it is?
The commissioning, how that fourth unit, essentially.
Sure, yeah, um, we had a chance, thank you for that.
Well, that mic in, will you, so I can hear you?
How's that? Better?
Hope so.
Yeah.
No, they can't hear you up back.
Okay, I'll yell a little louder. Yeah, we went through the building pretty extensively, and the commissioning that Dan Is talking about is, um, it will help the equipment run much more efficiently, uh, we Did measure, uh, a number of different things in the facility, and, um, the exhaust rates In the, um, in part of the facility that Dan mentioned is, is pretty, is low, it's About half of what design would currently have, so, um, it is necessary, and the commissioning Will help quite a bit to get that building efficiently running.
Are you talking bringing in more air, or taking out air, or what?
Yes, sir, both of those, actually, yeah, it'll bring in more ventilation air to improve This carbon dioxide levels, um, it'll also remove more air from the kind of steamy locker Room area, uh, to get that in, inside ventilation to be better.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, do you have a question?
I do just have one, pretty basic question. I apologize for my ignorance, but can any of this be an insurance claim at all?
Mechanics' liens, age of the building in Norway?
Um.
Warranted item?
Correct, which then reduces the amount.
The city has taken ownership of the building, so I would guess no, but I'm not in, I'll Turn to film.
So we've explored this, uh, some, and, uh, because it's not just this, there's Been a couple other issues that we discovered, I think the Norway Savings Bank Arena, probably Six or seven, probably over six now, six years old, um, there's been a few issues that Has taken place, as, as we've explored it, we've realized we've hit a dead end each Time, and there's not much that we can do at this point, because of the years that Have been placed.
Okay, but it has been explored, so, yeah, perfect.
If I, if I could, I, looking at this and listening, and, I mean, between the workshop, And I'd like to just make this as an option of the council, I'd recommend that, you know, There's a lot of, there's a lot of separate projects here, we have CIP, we have five-year Plans, we have ARPA money for immediacy, if there is any such thing as immediacy with Ordering an HVAC system from wherever, um, and lead time, I'd, I'd like, I'd recommend That we table this item for a period of no longer than 90 days, allowing staff to go Ahead and look at, you know, what is priority levels, funding for, what could be waiting Out to the next fiscal year for potential bond and so forth. And that's up to the council, but I would think that a decision made on a blanket statement At this point, um, based upon one report, no offense to you, but you're free, uh, so Sometimes we have to take that into consideration as well, um, might be a little bit premature.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do, I would like to see the different projects broken out, and, and I, and prioritize the projects, opposed to one blanket.
The original proposal I sent you at the last meeting had all of the projects listed, These are the four priorities that are broken out right here, um, there's another four that Will be asked for funding in the next year's CIP, and there's another six after that, um, These were primarily, uh, focused on due to CO2 levels was one of the big drivers, if You can see, like at Norway, it's three times what it should be, um, Hasty, the same thing, Hasty doesn't have AC, doesn't have heat in cer- certain parts, uh, parts of the building In the winter, because the pipes are so corroded.
Understand, okay, so.
Yeah. If I could just say, I, I would just say, uh, council, if you choose to table this For 90 days, you certainly have that, that ability, um, I wouldn't, um, put language On there that the staff would need to do any further work, I think, uh, BIMs has done An exceptional job with evaluating all of our facilities, and grading them and determining Out what we need, and we did come forward with the priorities, as, we've already done That, so, I wouldn't put any language with that, if the council chooses they want to Wait 90 days to give this consideration, or to look at the ARPA funds before they go Out, that, that's completely fine, um, there is CIP process that will begin, um, uh, probably Around the first of the year, and so as the mayor said, that could certainly go back To CIP, and we, you will see these in the, in the CIP project, if it's not funded out Of ARPA, these are priorities.
Would any of these projects be able to get done this year? With ARPA?
With ARPA, we could go ahead and move forward with them, they wouldn't need to wait To go, as we normally would do under bonding and that process. Uh, you know, that would be part of the bid process, I think we would put it out to Bid, and then, uh, we could certainly make the bid process with a, you know, this is The date we want to make sure that this project is completed, I think we have a couple that Are priority, especially when we start taking a look at, uh, the report that came back regarding Our Norway regarding carbon dioxide levels, those are ones that we want to make sure that We're addressing those, uh, immediately as we move forward, but, um, but like I said, Council wants to table it, that's fine, you're, you're, you're gonna see these come back Before you again.
I'm, I'm not in favor of tabling it, only because, these are highly-used places, we Have children, we have people coming in every single day, I would rather spend a little Bit of money and get it fixed, and make sure it's done correctly, so we can get back to The norm, rather than tabling it for 90 days, potentially waiting for bonds and everything Like that, if we have the opportunity, we should just do it.
Well, I think we need to explore this, because we just had a workshop talking about Return on investment on appropriations, there is, from a dollar standpoint, did you Actually, at last workshop, we talked about cost savings efficiencies, and what we'd Be gaining on an annual basis, do you have those numbers?
I don't have hard numbers, I know at Norway it'd be significant, um, because of The energy cost rate, the problem is, we're getting, because of the deal we made with Hydro and, um, solar, we're getting a good rate on our electricity, so those costs have Been absorbed by Norway, um, those, those 50% increase in energy, so, this will reduce That, but it's not gonna be, you're not gonna see hundreds of thousands of dollars worth Of savings, electricity, um, it's more a level of comfort, a more level of carbon Dioxide, I guess, that's kind of going, I don't know where this is.
Oh, thank you very much, yeah, if I, if I could just speak to the council, and The mayor, and the manager, I know that there's competition for funds, certainly in ARPA And CIP, and Council Haas, I can't agree with you anymore, the return on investment Is immediate, the amount of folks that use these public facilities on a daily basis, From a monetary perspective, I would expect to see a reduction of $50,000 annually in Energy and operational expense, but, folks, that's not what it's all about, we tried To put hard data with this independent engineering group in front of you, to make A decision on public safety and public health, and what's the return on investment on that? It's immediate.
And let's be clear, the return on investment is not necessarily a dollar, an any dollar, It's whether or not that we do, and we have the power to bond, outside of our normal Bonding schedule and window, to pay for something, do we use cash, or do we borrow the money? That's really where the return on investment, it's not the, the worthiness of the project, It's not the, uh, the safety and health, this is, at which pool of money do we use In order to accomplish the job in a prioritized fashion? So I want to make sure that's clear, this is business, and I've, I've done this before, Many times on commercial properties, um, and it's always, do you use, do you pay for It out of cash flow, or do you borrow the money at a X rate, and pay for it over years, Basically matching up with the, as you know, the lifespan of the product in which you're Purchasing, so I think that, those are the questions, and I, it's not about whether Or not it's doable or not, though that is something, but really the funding options In front of the council now, okay, whether do we spend 1.5 million on this right, immediately Now, with ARPA money, or do we use it with CIP or bond? Hence why the suggestion to table would make sense, now, if we don't want to table, Find a different alternate, or funding source.
What would be our, our rate, Ms. Eastman, right now, if we bonded for this 1.5 million?
Uh, when we did the school bonds, it was, uh, and it's gone up since then, it was Up to four the last year.
What do you think, you want to, you want to tell us where you think it's gonna be In six months?
Isn't there another issue, Mr. Mayor, I mean, you know, Hasty has a failing system, Which probably will not work this winter, apparently didn't work very well last winter, So if you table it for three months, and then you do the procurement dance, which takes Months, they're not fixing a heating system that needs to be fixed before winter, until After the winter, so.
So you have options.
I would be opposed.
The council, the council has options, you can do the whole amount with ARPA, how Long's it take, Jill, to do a supplemental bond? For, let's say we wanted to go out to bond for 1.5 million? The process?
Well, it's a month, a month-long process with the council, because it has to be advertised Two weeks before the public hearing, then there's a public hearing, and then there's Another meeting, a meeting, it has to have two meetings, and then it takes me time, we Have to do the official statement, all that, the stuff.
So what's the most urgent proj- project right now? That's question one.
Yeah, I would, I, I don't know.
If everything's a priority, nothing is, so the.
Well, because of the four priorities, that's the problem.
It's all four equal priorities, so this is, I mean, I do have, and, and again, my Job is not, and it may sound that I'm countering everything you're saying, but it's not, please Don't take it that way, my job is to provide intelligence to the council and make a decision. You have multiple pathways here to accomplish what we all need to accomplish, which is healthy Buildings that are operational when our, when our patrons or citizens need it, um, I will say right now, that you could use a par- partial ARPA money for a top priority Issue, whether it be Hasty, okay, and get that going quickly, it is a shelter, after All, that is a priority project, and then look at bonds for the other three, so that Is where I think you need to look and weigh the pros and cons, because you don't want To spend all your cash in your pocket on one capital expense, that's why we have CIP Process and bonding.
Would we be able to do all four, right now?
Yes.
We have the, the personnel to be able to accomplish all four projects?
We'd be contracted for, but yes.
I mean, the contractors are committed, and?
Yes, they're, they're aware of the plan.
Any other comments or questions, or motions, Council Walker?
Well, I, I know one thing for sure, I went through enough different classes to Understand, if you're not breathing the proper air, and you don't have the proper ventilation, People can go down on the ice quicker than you can blink an eye, and that scares me when You, when you sit here as professionals and tell me that, we do not have the proper air Flowing in there, and I, I can relate back to Massachusetts, they went through some Pretty big suits up there, because they were told the same thing you're telling us, They did not take care of them, and all you need is someone that has a little hyper Heart, and because he can't breathe enough, he goes down, that could be us tomorrow.
And I think, to pick up on your point, uh, Council Walker, when, um, Essar ARPA Was created by the federal government, uh, projects that we've seen all over the state Of Maine have been wholeheartedly focused on ventilation issues, so the, although bonding, And I understand, listening to the mayor, a great point about, uh, which pot of funds, You might want to pay for something, but Essar ARPA was specifically targeted for ventilation Projects.
Can I ask, your business model is to provide free consultations on HVAC? And plant engineering plans?
It's actually, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was, um, that was Brought up as, uh, last time that we did a free audit, um, our group is actually a privately-held Investment group, and we make investments, spend significant amounts of money to try To bring awareness to cities, towns, hospitals, and school districts about not only ventilation Air, but failing HVAC systems, we targeted Auburn, Maine, because it wasn't, um, Falmouth Or Freeport, or those that, uh, perhaps are a little bit wealthier, and we were impressed With the, the growth model, so.
You targeted Auburn specifically for some of those reasons, did you, when you, When you did this, so, you actually charge municipalities for these audits?
We make selected investments, and we do not charge, um, we go forward with a lot Of them, and for whatever reason, they, uh, the project might be held up, and we don't Get paid for that, so.
So you do get, what do you mean, you do, you do get paid for the audits?
No, we do not.
So, in general, do you never charge for your audits?
No, we do not charge for the audit, no, uh, and, because that can be a barrier To doing the complexity and the depth of the audit, if you saw what, uh, Dan and Derek Had reviewed in the presentation that we did last time, placing data loggers in all Of the city buildings and recording CO2 levels and actually measuring air.
So you're a nonprofit that's funded by philanthropical sources, or?
We are a privately-held, uh, group, uh, of investors that, um, we do not make profit, No.
Privately-held group of investors?
Privately.
Are the investors part of the HVAC industry?
Uh, actually, we do.
Do you disclose your investors?
We, we do, um, we do complete audits of building facilities, so, everything from The roof to the basement.
So that does include HVAC vendors?
It does.
Okay. I'd make a, Council Gary?
Do, did you want to finish?
No, no, go, go, I need a minute anyways.
Okay, thank you, I agree with what the good councilors have said, now's the time To do it, I know weather conditions, temperatures also affect the environmental, I mean, what You guys are saying that we're trying to fix, so now's the time to do it, especially With the warmer weather, because that could condense whatever people's breathing, and Also in the long run, it's gonna cost, it's gonna save us money if things are running Properly.
If they're accurate, I have, I'm sorry, but I have serious doubts about the authenticity Of the study, and I'm, I'm gonna give you some professional Q and A here, if you would, There's an old adage, that you get what you pay for, and I'm sorry, but at this point, I, I really do think a second opinion is needed, based upon the funding mechanism That funds your corporation, and what your goals are, um, it just gives me considerable Doubt and potential conflict of interest, I'm sure that the people, the companies that Are gonna be receiving the RFPs and do this work, are probably some of, of your investors.
I, I think a second opinion, if you'd like one, is, is welcome, because, uh, all Of the people that have worked on the audit have been independent of our organization, So, we're more than happy to have our, our work peer-reviewed.
Okay, good, it's up to the council that there's one other option for payment, to Approve this with ARPA funds today, to get the ball rolling, to move into the process Of bonding this, and then substitute the ARPA funds with a bond at a latter point, 30, 60, 90 days out, whenever that's complete, so in other words, displacement, start it Off with that, then reimburse it with bond.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Council Haas, do I have a second? No second?
I'll second.
Got a second from Council motion, so we have a motion on the floor now to approve The order, as stands, paying it with ARPA money, with the knowledge that we will work On the bond and replace the ARPA money with bond money at a point in time.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'd like to manage to chime in to make sure we're not doing something Playing around with this money.
So I think that, what you're ultimately doing is, you're, you are allocating this, However you use bond money for either this project or another project, um, we could, We can look at that, and what you can always do is you can take and reallocate those funds Back out, I think that it is, um, it would need to be explored, I need to make sure That our grant writer, uh, runs this through the US Treasurer, um, because these are funds That are being regulated very closely, and so, um, so that is, that's, that's one thing We would want to make sure that's, that's taken care of, so, uh, you can move the motion, If that's what the council wants to do, um, we would then explore it, if that needed To come back to you, we would then bring that back to you for, for a change.
Council Staples?
Uh, yeah, in the, in the workshop today, we, we discussed having $3 million of ARPA Funds remaining, is that before or after this?
Before.
So it'd be 1.4 after.
Any other debate, conversation? If not, I'm gonna ask for a vote on the motion. So Council Haas, did you have something?
Well, I was just gonna say that, it accomplishes both things, is, and I, I understand It's a, it's a free consultation, but if they're saying that there are these negative Impacts on the community right now, and they need to be addressed immediately, then We say yes, we go ahead and we get them started, but then we do have that open door of, how Do we refinance this, how do we pay ourselves back, so we're not left with 1.4 of ARPA money, And we can reallocate that to something else, and use the bond to pay for these immediately, That's a win-win, in my book.
Council Gary?
Or, we can just do it as-is, spend the ARPA money, and then not worry about having To find a way to replace this money, and to use this money for another project, because Then we can use the money for, that we don't switch around, for whatever we need, because Whatever the project might be, may not be ARPA-qualified.
So you could, uh, do that, or you could just pass the motion, and then, remember, The reallocation and bond votes will be public, and have to come in front of this, uh, council Again in the future, and that's our determination. in front of this council again in the future, and that's where a determination on that can be made. Counselor Moore?
My first priority is that, obviously, the facilities are safe. I know HASTY is woefully inadequate. I know that there's a lot of kids that plan on playing basketball there this winter. And I listened very closely to Counselor Walker and his years of experience and his comments on Norway Savings Bank Arena. So I love the opportunity of some flexibility in pursuing other funding. My top priority is that this is taken care of. Dan's been doing a lot of work, and he's come before us several times, and he's just trying to really impress upon us the time-sensitive nature of these facilities. And my knee jerk is always, yeah, let's table and think longer, but clock's ticking, right? And winter's coming. So my priority is that we fund this, and that compromise does that. It gives us flexibility. And we may default into a position where we can't bond out and the ARPA funds are allocated to this. So I like that compromise, because I know, one way or the other, this project's going to be funded.
Mr. Manager?
So that we're not going back and forth on how it will be allocated, maybe the best motion would be that the council moves forward with proceeding with the bid and implementation of a new HVAC system for these four projects. At your next meeting, we will come back to you with how you allocate those funds.
Mr. Mayor, I completely agree with that, Mr. City Manager. I think that it's unwise for us to vote on something where we don't even know the legality of it. And ARPA, and if all federal funding is really complicated, I have 40 years of experience with that. And whenever you think it's going to be one way, you may be told it's the complete and utter opposite. So, you know, I think City Manager's suggestion is a good one.
So from a protocol standpoint, we'll have to vote down the existing motion. So I'm going to take a vote at this point. I'm sorry, Sue, do you have something?
Unless Counselor Hawes and whoever made the second would like to withdraw that motion.
Unless you'd like to withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw.
I'll withdraw.
Okay, very good. So it's clean slate. Counselor Whiting, I'm going to ask you to make the motion that the manager just gave you, because I just totally.
My mind is blanking, I apologize. I'm an old guy.
Mr. Manager, can you give us a language again on that one, please?
I would just direct the city manager to move forward with the bid and the bid project for the HVAC system that identifies the four priority initiatives.
I would make that motion as stated by the city manager.
I've got a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second from Counselor Moore. Any debate? None? Bringing it up for a vote. All those in favor? Yeah, I pass it 7-0. Thank you. And make sure you have the vendors stop calling me, because they've been calling me about getting on the bid list here for a while. Tell them that it's probably best to wait till after the vote. Not that funny.
Thanks for your support, Mayor, for making.
Thank you very much. So next on the agenda, we have Order 95-06272022, allocating $100,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds. I did, I'm sorry. You're right, thank you. Amending Order 137-12062021, previously adopted by the city council on December 6, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Counselor Staples, do I have a second? Counselor Walker? Open this up for public comment. Any public comment? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council, discussion?
Comment?
Oh, public comment, oh, please, I'm sorry.
Dillingham Hill Road, and I read the agenda, but I don't remember what this was. And so you look and you ask if we have a question. Tell me, what is this order from December 6?
Let me pull it up for, hold on one second.
Please.
Oh, I can't read that. It's up on the screen. Basically, allow the funding, this is allowing the funding to allocate and join a consortium with the city of Auburn Water District. Stand up a municipal and fiber network. This is something that we passed in December.
Sure, sure.
Dark fiber, yep.
Sure, no.
This is one of those things, as Counselor Whiting stated.
It's good.
To be compliant with federal laws. So we're adding a red text, which is.
Right.
And/or other cybersecurity or policy software upgrades.
Got it. I don't print the 147 pages, and it's hard. So if you could just give a little bit?
I try, I try every once. Sometimes I usually hit the big ones, like I've done tonight. Give me a little credit for that. The little ones that are adjusting verbiage, I will give you a hint. If you go online to the agenda and you touch any order number on the front page one of the agenda, it will hyperlink to the exact text in which we're discussing. And so you don't have to thumb through all 147 pages. So it's a little insider trade secret there. So now we have it up on the screen. Council, do we have any debate or discussion?
So the way I read this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we're putting in a fiber network, and the additional cybersecurity and policy allotments are for that fiber network, and they're not, for instance, cybersecurity systems for City Hall?
It's both. So it's to make sure that the language that we're allocating allows for not just the fiber, which we're still working and trying to work that consortium out, but it is to also enhance our current system for protections that we're hoping to be able to move forward with.
So I know that cybersecurity is expensive, so I guess I'm just worried that the cybersecurity portion of this would eat up that $250,000 pretty quickly, and that my priority here is the fiber network. I just want to make sure that that still happens and that it's not downgraded in any way for the purpose of cybersecurity.
Yeah, we'll make sure we bring the IT director in for an update on that in the near future.
Any other conversations or comment? None being asked for a vote at this time? All those in favor? Pass it 7-0. Now, I'll go into Order 95-06272022, allocating $100,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the OptBox and kayak rental kiosk, as explained earlier tonight during the workshop. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Counselor Staples, second Counselor Walker. Open this up to the public for comment. Opportunity boxes are a main-made box, portable, and this one will be used to transport, that's the second one, but keep that up, will be used to transport recreational activities and games, kiosks, information throughout the city on a as needed basis, festivals, et cetera. Second one is this, rent fund, kayaks, app, credit card, disclosure, PDFs, paddles. Want a kayak? Go down to Great Falls, get the kayak? Kayak. Bring it back. Upfront expenditure is roughly $16,000 on the kayak, but there is a rev share on revenues, 50-50 between the vendor and the city of Auburn on the go-forward, guaranteed five years. So that's an update for the public. Public, would you like to talk on this or discuss?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I amend this before public comment?
Rather not, if you could just.
Okay.
Use public comment first. Anybody from the public like to comment? No? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the excellent workshop presentation on this product about the canoes and stuff, and then rereading some of that information also put out by this company, OptBox, and their village comment, yes, pop-ups, I would like to amend this order to add another $100,000 in order to buy as many of these pop-ups as we can, because these would be great for pop-up businesses around the parking lot we have out here. They're movable. We can also take them to Great Falls Plaza, set them up there. They can also be moved if we needed to put on events at Anniversary Park. The great things are, we can promote small businesses in these different little kiosk shops, and also nonprofits, like the high schools or the PAL Center. Any of these groups can take.
We have a motion.
Yes.
Then we can get into the debate, okay?
Okay, thank you.
But we have a motion on the floor to add $100,000 from the ARPA account, excuse me, to enhance or increase the funding for this order, which is currently at $100,000. So if you're in a total of $200,000. And a second from Counselor Hawes. Okay. Now we'll open this up, as amended. So and I will say, all those, I want to remind the council, I think Counselor Gary and Counselor Walker are here, when we first talked about ARPA funds, one of the things that came up as an idea for expenditure was a Christmas Village and Festival Plaza. If you look at the German Christmas Village, Austrian Christmas Villages, historically in the U.S. and especially in Europe, they were where small vendors can actually set up and shop, coordinated with city events, leads into New Year's for craft beer vendors, food vendors, and so forth. And then again, can be used for numerous myriad things. The nearest one we have is Boston. And there's been talk from Griddy's, as well as other local businesses, who would like to see this and help sponsor it. So there is a ROI, financial ROI, though it's almost incalculable at this point. So just wanted to give you a little bit of sort of background. This is not something that just came about. It's something that's been talked about for three years now. Counselor Staples?
Yeah, I really like where Counselor Gary was going with this. You know, I don't know that this is the original intent of these when we were presented this in the workshop, but, you know, I really think that there's an opportunity here for the city of Auburn for some economic development and encouraging some small business owners in some sort of a business incubator fashion. You build a small business, the initial startup costs are so much lower on something like this, and you take a business and you build it up, and then you've got somebody building something in the downtown. This is a knockdown, awesome project. We need to do this, and we need to do more of it.
Counselor Moore?
And I'd also like to add, for anybody in the public that's watching this that didn't observe the workshop, that OptBox is a Maine-owned and run company, and I believe there, it was either Waldeboro or Nobleboro. And these OptBoks are manufactured from recycled plastics, which I think is definitely positive as well.
OptBoxinfo.com, great website, if anybody wants to look at this. Yeah, I think this is a good opportunity, and recyclable with, not recyclable, a huge lifespan, hundreds of years. So because of the construction, it's a lot, we were initially looking at sheds, wooden sheds, that might be questionable and surviving and move from one location to another. I think this is a much better alternative. Is there any other comments or debate on this?
I don't mean to be a wet blanket, but I'd like to ask the city manager about staffing demands, just because, you know, we didn't get into it, but for example, the recreation department dealing with fishing rods, that's great, and, you know, get kids out fishing and so on. Somebody's going to be disentangling lines. I mean, there are some labor costs involved in this, and so I just want to get a reaction. My preference would be to just approve the order as is, see how it works, see how staff deals with it, and then wait, and probably expand. I think we probably will, but I just like a little reaction on staffing.
Just on the staffing piece, I think that we would need to really work, when we talk about the REC initiative, that's where we're going to need to work with partners, the recreation board, to talk about some volunteers, because what we, the worst thing that would happen would be that we would have this in place, it would be locked, and nobody would ever have access to it. So we want to make sure that on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that that is open, we've got a volunteer that's ensuring that they're monitoring the equipment that's going out, and the equipment that I'm talking about is more like the, you know, the cornhole, whatever other activities that could take place down there. I think that the fly fishing that Jay was talking about and some of the other fishing initiatives, that's where we really look at, like Counselor Moore was talking about, how do we partner with the discovery kind of initiative to make some of that work? And then that would be able to make sure that that's something that's scheduled. You know, Jay has talked with probably four or five staff members that all fly fish, that all want to participate, you know, if you know anyone who fly fishes, they like to spread the word about getting out and fly fishing, and so they want to be part of that. So staffing that, that's how we would look at that. I think there's two approaches to that. When it comes to the larger initiative, I think we could go ahead and appropriate that, and we would move forward with getting that. That would probably buy us some time to really get this ready for that next holiday event, so that we could potentially move pretty quickly on that. We have a lot of infrastructure in Festival Plaza now, and so a lot of that, we need to take a look and see, what do we need to make that happen so that we can kind of create that village kind of image that, I was looking quickly for a photo, but, you know, that could take place in Festival Plaza. So I think we're good. Jay, I don't know if you need to add anything?
No, I was popped up here thinking I might need to add, but that's, I think Counselor Whiting, you brought up an excellent point, and so we have been talking with Jeremy in REC, whose staff would have to handle this. The idea being that some of the outfitters themselves would actually teach the fly fishing, that type of stuff. The staff that would have to man these at certain times, those would be for specific events and specific times. And then again, when it comes to the, you know, Christmas Village or something, then it's staffed by whoever the vendor is. And then in the winter, if we move at least one of them to the PAL Center, then that would be PAL Center staff. So we've put it together, saying how do we staff these, and I think we've got it covered.
Is there any other questions while we have? Counselor Staples?
You know, one thing that jumps out at me here really is, Jay really is talking about a separate thing from what I'm thinking. I wonder if what Jay wants to do is an awesome idea, but I think we really could use a separate order to do some of this pop-up shop business type stuff to buy another one. Maybe what we really should do here is to just buy the one that Jay wants.
I will, okay, so I just want to remind you of what we knew, there's an ordering window, and you buy the one Jay wants, and then looking at what Counselor Gary's talking about is smaller ones that are smaller in scope, specifically used for outside rental, for small business startups. It could be a nominal rental of $10 a day. So I mean, it can be used on the same order with direction that the manager and Jay will work with, but I think you have an ordering window here, because if you don't hit it for the second time, you're pushing this out for a year plus, according to Jason earlier. Counselor Moore?
Jay, hypothetically, we move from 100,000 allocated to 200,000. What does that mean for quality of units, number of units? Like, what does that look like to you?
The, there's a couple of things. One, I wanted to address Staples, and then as part of addressing Staples, I think it helps to answer your question. So back with the previous city council, and it's my mistake for not realizing and thinking this is the same group of people. Originally, when we talked about OptBoks or something for the downtown revitalization plan, we had talked about using storage containers. And when we looked into those, it was like $100,000 per box to do it. So then we came up with this OptBox, and probably during the workshop, I should have shown this kind of village that they put together in their presentation. So they've got multiple uses, and that is one of the things that we're talking about, to be able to do pop-up shops, and whether that be in Anniversary Park at one point, and then Festival Plaza another, with the idea of when we do those pop-up shops, if there's a coffee shop that operates out of one of them, that we work to segue them into a brick and mortar location. So I think we're all on the similar page, and my initial ask was 100,000, because, you know, honestly, I spoke to city management, and I said, you know, I'd like to get a couple hundred thousand, but, you know, city council's got a lot of decisions to make, and they suggested 100,000. But I think Counselor Gary, who's been working on this for years, and Mayor, on a few times, I think these two are eye to eye on things. They upped it to where I actually want it to be. I think we're on a similar, and then yours was the quality of boxes as well.
Yeah, what's the quality? What's the mix? Like, what's the quantity? Because I can imagine there's smaller boxes, and they can be used for certain things, and something that's a little more built out. And just to add on to that, is there any opportunity for private rentals of this from the city as a revenue stream?
Yeah, we could do private rentals of them as a revenue stream. I think what it would do is offset costs. I don't know if we'd get a lot of revenue out of it. Our thought is that we will, the size blocks, as you can order, they like to keep the width to the width of what would fit on like a tractor-trailer truck. It can be narrower, but they don't want to go any longer than that. And then the length is really determined by what you really want to do, but essentially the biggest you'd normally do would be like a tractor trailer length. So, but a lot of these would probably be somewhere between, you know, 10 feet wide and 15, 20 feet long or something like that. There's one that they do that's for craft breweries, and it's basically a small walk-in cooler. And then that way, you can have multiple breweries off of, you know, a handful of taps. Our thought, our idea, is that we would keep these boxes fairly small, like 10 foot by 15, and that we put the rack system in there that's adjustable and can accommodate a lot of things, and then some electricity as well as security cameras. That way, it can get changed out for whatever you're using it for. We'll probably stay away from the food and concession stands, and the reason for that is as soon as you add a kitchen or any of that stuff, the price goes through the roof. And we've actually had quite a number of, of food trucks register licenses in this past year in the city of Auburn. So I think if we create a pop-up situation, that we would invite a food truck to join in.
Sure. When I think of opportunities for rental, I think of a brew fest over, over in Lewis and Ryan Baxter sponsoring it, and maybe they want to rent one of these, and that's where they run all of their apparel out of. It's something that really just comes to mind.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, you could think of craft fairs. So in a Christmas village concept, which is a business incubation concept, what happens is it's open every Wednesday, Friday evenings, Saturday during the day. That's when you have Santa come, hot cocoa by nonprofits, but people are coming there because they're shopping at the craft fairs, and then they go to Griddy's, and they go to our local businesses. So it becomes this high walkability neighborhood that is a destination for four weeks around Christmas, from Thanksgiving to Christmas. And then it's repurposed for New Year's Eve in the plaza, for beer vendors or what have you, food vendors, and then it's moved. So there's a lot of great options. I think, worst case, we can't get it, it comes back, and the money isn't spent on this. It comes back to us for a general allocation through ARPA expenditures later on. But at least we have the flexibility. And I'm very curious to see about economies of scale. Right there is a great example of a small one, not the recreational one, but the additional $100,000. You're talking a 10 by 12 probably set up, highly durable. But then, at that point, you have them forever. It's a good sunk resource, business incubator. So that's what we're discussing. I think we get it back, we allot, we look at economy of scale, see what we can afford, what kind of bulk discount we can get. If it doesn't work out, report back to us, no harm, no foul, but at least we tried for this holiday season.
Right.
So just a thought there. Any other comments before I ask for a vote?
The, the only other thing I would suggest is perhaps in the wording, we say the, for the kayak rentals and O Boxes and associated costs, in case, like when we go to purchase these O Boxes and a couple of other things, there might be some costs mixed in there that weren't specific to the O Box.
We're just amending this to increase it from 100,000 to 200,000. So all your existing language stays.
Yes, gotcha.
Okay. No other questions? Ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your hand. Opposed? Passes 7-0.
Point of order, did you get a vote on the amendment first? You need to vote on the amendment first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we skip that?
Yes.
That's very, it's the AC in here is not working out. So that was a motion as now adopted. Okay, final, final debate on the actual amended motion. Do we have any debate on the final amended motion? No? Ask for a vote then, thank you, Sue. All those in favor of the motion as amended, passes 7-0. Okay, now we have, is it ordinance 17 dash 06272022, re-adopting the ward maps and descriptions that were adopted on 3/17/2014, using the 2020 Census Block Reference. It's a public hearing at first reading. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion, Councilor Walker, second, or Councilor Staples. By state law, upon redistricting, excuse me, upon the census results, we have to redistrict our wards if they are in more than a 10% deviation in population. We do not have that. The council discussed in workshop to maintain the ward integrity as is where is, so we're in compliance with state law. That's where we're at. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this? No? We'll bring it back to the council. Council? No further discussion? We worked up this pretty well. Okay. Ask for a roll call vote on the first reading, please.
Councilor Gary?
Yes.
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Councilor Mills?
Yes.
Councilor Moran?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Staples?
Yes.
Passes 7-0. Open this up to the last open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which was not on tonight's agenda. Members would like to speak, please step up to the podium, give us your name, address, and leave me your comments to three minutes. Okay, gonna bring it back to council then. Reports?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
That Ops Box, Jim Lynch from Shepley Street, that Ops Box sounds great. In fact, there's a French teacher at Edward Little High School that has encouraged his students to build these little houses. And I'm sure they could build a lot of those Ops Boxes for a lot less money than $200,000. And it would be a great, it would be a great project for the kids and the community. The second thing is, I'm all for these Ops Boxes, so I'll just put them on Lake Street and Shepley Street. Thank you.
Your roads not wide up, just for, we, I did talk with, I did talk with the instructor over there. They can only push out because of kids and so forth, one per year. Okay, but it's definitely an option to keep adding on to it, but that's a great program.
Hi, Susan Brown, Dillingham Hill. So I just wanted to tag on to Mr. Lynch, Mr. Lynch, about the situation with the neighborhoods. I used to live in that neighborhood before I moved out to Dillingham. And it's, I think, any established neighborhood that can envision having a 12-unit apartment and/or, you know, a business that, you know, might be on, that you just don't want next door, really, really affects people's quality of life. I think the neighborhoods that are now being impacted by the Court Street development, I think, you know, we do need housing for the many, but I question, and I will continue to question, the sensibility of that. We've got one of the two, three separately built areas, you know, adjacent to, across the street, that, you know, now look on this apartment situation. That doesn't mean I'm a NIMBY. That doesn't mean I don't think apartments should exist. I do, I do. I, the last neighborhood I lived in before moving to Maine was a really nice mixed residential neighborhood in the city of Buffalo, adjacent to Frederick Lawmstead Park. It had higher income, lower income. It had, with the wealthiest of Buffalo, Jacob's family, big, 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 big family box right on the, the border of the park. By building triples and doubles, how many seconds am I, am I about to?
You're good. I'm pretty good.
I know, you like to watch it, though. So I just, I really question, I mean, I know you wouldn't mind if a pig farm was built next to your house, because when we out in Dillingham Hill, almost had a marijuana farm on the corner of an established neighborhood. You mentioned that to me, you know, it could have been a.
Loud use.
It could have been a, a pig farm.
Yeah.
Right, right. Well, allowed use in planned areas are, you know, you like them to go hand in hand. I just, I just think that you didn't think a lot about the city's residents that are already here in their homes, and I definitely think that if you built some duplexes and some, maybe some row houses, you would have seen a totally different reaction from your community, rather than these big giant apartment buildings, which I don't see as walkable,
Anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Again, I encourage you to come to the community meeting so we can talk about all the big apartment blocks that have been built in your neighborhood since this took effect two and a half months ago.
Maureen O'Brien, 42 Winter Street in Auburn. I want to talk about the money, the $10,000 that was allocated to cover PR for the lake issue. I understand the money went to a friend or associate of, Councilor Mills. That doesn't smell good to me. You should be allocating money to support.
Excuse me, ma'am? I'm sorry, this is.
I, I'm talking, this is my time, I get my three minutes.
Actually, your time is to talk about city business.
I am talking about city business, the spending of money for funding PR for the lake. You should be funding an equal amount of money for people who want to have a different opinion than the, than the mayor.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have to set the record straight in this, this open our public discussions for city business. Auburn Water District is not a city department.
It doesn't matter.
The city council nor the city staff authorize any expenditures at the Auburn Water District. It is their own entity, they can do what they want to do. So this is for city business. Thank you for your comment. I would encourage you to go to the Auburn Water District meetings, in turn, they have public comment that you can talk there. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment?
I have a section for the whole time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to reports. Mayor's report, nothing except for the Fourth of July is next week, Liberty Festival, so please, everybody enjoy Independence Day. Councillors, start on this side. Councilor Gary?
None at this time.
Councilor Whiting?
Attended the World Refugee Celebration on Monday, and saw Governor Mills for the fourth week in a row. I said, we have to stop meeting like this. And also met Dr. Shaw, very nice man, very intelligent, and very funny. So it was worth the trip just for that. That's it, thank you.
Nothing at this time. Nothing for me.
Nothing, thank you.
I have a couple of things. One, I'll speak for Larry Pelletier, that pooping your dog's poop up is very important to Larry. He does a lot of walking around the city, and he does a lot of it for people. And don't flush your pet waste down, whatever you do, especially your toilets at home. And make sure you do not compost your pet waste as well, it's, full of diseases and kill people. Do not put your pet waste in any catch basins because we pay a lot of money for the water that runs through that plant across the river. So Larry would love to thank you for making sure you take care of your pets, pick up your own waste, and dispose it the right way. Tuesday night, I have a meeting at Rowley's Diner at 6:00 this Tuesday. Glenn Holmes will be our evening speaker. You're welcome to come down, ask any questions that you'd like to ask. He has all the answers there, and come on down, enjoy yourself. The other one is Thursday night, Neighborhood Watch at Sixth Street Congregational Church, sponsored by the Auburn Police Department. We have been doing this for approximately 10 years, and we get approximately 17 people to show up every month. It would be nice if we could get 70 people. So you don't have to live in New Auburn to come to the Neighborhood Watch, because we love to hear what anyone has to talk about from the city of Auburn, and what your neighborhood is like, how nice it is, how nice it isn't, what goes wrong, what we should do that's right. We'll listen to all of it, so you're welcome. 6:00, Sixth Street Congregational Church. Thank you.
Councilor Staples?
Yeah, I attended the, the planning board meeting last week on the, last Tuesday. I thought it was a well-attended meeting, and I want to encourage residents who have additional concerns to discuss about the zoning, to attend one of the neighborhood meetings on the 12th of the 13th that Mayor Leveque mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Really looking forward to more public input on this. I think it's really important that we come up with, you know, community consensus on what to do here. I also wanted to tell everybody that there's a neighborhood meeting on Wednesday this week, the 29th, at the Auburn Senior Community Center at 6:00 to discuss Gammage Avenue area and some of the different things that are happening around road, road plan improvements in that area. I think it's going to be attended by city staff and PD. Also, there's another planning board meeting tomorrow night. I, I think that it's important, there's not a council representative on the planning board, but I think it's really important that we, we publicize those council meetings. Lots of things on the agenda, check it out, and it'll be right here. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Make sure you're there before 9:00, though.
Yes, sir. I'll adjourn him. All the reports, Jill, we got a finance report before we accept. Mr. Mayor, oh, did I skip you?
It's all right. I have a couple of things, so, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, suppose so.
We are wrapping up our fiscal year. That'll end on Thursday, just for council to be aware, as we move forward with wrapping up accounts and the projects that are underway, Finance Department is moving forward and working collaboratively with all the directors to ensure all the wrapping up of those books are completed. Assessing Department is working hard to provide you with numbers regarding commitment, you will see that soon, as well as our grant writer. We have several grants that require multiple year-end reporting, that is also underway. So that's, that's what we transition to come the end of June, beginning of July. Beginning of July kicks off our new budget year, so a lot of, lot of initiatives underway that also, if we have collective bargaining units, that's when some of our collective bargaining units, their contracts end. We have two collective bargaining units that their contract is ending, that's the MSEA contract as well as the FIRE contract. So Brian Wood, our Assistant City Manager, is leading that with a team of staff and negotiations. Those negotiations are underway. They will not be signed before the end, before the end of the fiscal year, but negotiations are moving forward. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Phil? And we're going to go into the finance report. Jill, is there anything you'd like to lead us up on? We have your memo here in our packet.
Yeah, you do, and like Phil said, fiscal year end is Thursday, so I've been watching the line items and actually ran all the reports, and I think we're going to end up probably just about as well as we did last year. And that's what it looks like right now, so I'm not concerned. I mean, some of the line items are over, but overall, the budget will probably come in under budget, and revenues are going to come in over, so it's a good thing.
I'll get a motion to accept and place and file the May 2022 final monthly financial report.
Motion to move.
Second.
Councilor Walker, I'll say for Councilor Milk. Any discussion, questions about the finance report? Councilor Staples?
Yeah, I just want to recognize that I know that this is a really busy week for you, and the next week even busy, and, and thank you. It's a lot of good work, really.
This is my favorite time of year, actually. I love it, so can't help myself.
Councilor Walker?
I was going to say the same thing. Thank you, Jill, for everything you do.
It's like Christmas for Jill.
Thank you.
Any other platitudes for Jill? No, nothing.
Mr. Mayor, would you announce the two meeting times once again?
Oh, the community meetings? Sure, sure, sure. It's going to be July 12, 5:30 Walton Cafeteria. Wednesday, July 13 at Fairview Gym, 5:30 again, 5:30 to 7:00. Okay?
Okay.
And we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor? I'm sorry, all, please keep your hands up, all those in favor? Passes 7-0. Oh, got it, okay. Next, we have an executive session for economic development matter pursuant to one MRSA Section 405. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Walker, second from Councilor Staples. Just put a note, there will be no action after these executive items, excuse me, agenda items, so we'll be going dark and not coming back in, other than for adjournment. All those in favor of executive session, please raise your hand. Passes. Okay, we're now in executive session.